Meeting for March 11, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Maples.
President.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor Matierio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristy Mossbach.
Here.
Okay, rise for a moment of silence in the invocation, the pledge. Tonight, we have a moment of silence for Helen Medekshow Hickman, was a resident since 1989, Richard Siciliano, who passed on 2/28/2025, longtime resident. He was 76 years young. Janelle Bloodworth, that's on 1/29/2025, resident since 1989, 87 years young, and Derek Sparzac, that's on 3/8/2025, 52 years young. That's young, ladies and gentlemen. May their memories be eternal. Pastor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's look to the Lord. The Lord has established His throne in heaven, and His kingdom rules over all. Praise the Lord, you mighty ones who do His bidding, who obey His word. Praise the Lord, all His heavenly hosts, you servants who do His will. Praise the Lord, all His works, everywhere in His dominion. Praise the Lord, my soul. Heavenly Father, we invite You. We ask that You would pour out Your Spirit upon us, that, Father, in this place, this day, we would receive Your divine guidance, Your knowledge, and Your wisdom. In Thy precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we'll open up with audience comments. Are there any audience comments? No? Audience comments? Oh, yes, okay. Come on up, Genevieve. Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Genevieve Bobrowski, 7501 Pine Tree Lane. I just want to bring this to your attention. The streets, we have the yellow line on the street, half of them are fading away. You can't even see them. And in front of my house, there's a stop sign. And the other night, a lady stopped while I was crossing the street. And a car came from the north behind her, and he was very impatient. And he tried to go around her, but he would have had to go on my grass. So he went across the yellow line, and he almost hit me when he went by. And I think we should get those yellow lines and some signs made up, because some of the people, they're so upset with this bridge being closed, that they go so fast that they, I follow the line, and I follow the speed limit, but they pass me. And they go across the yellow line, and that's, I know that it's a ticket if you got caught.
Sure.
So I think we should have some signs made up, so that, and the, and the yellow lines repainted.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
We're feverishly working on that.
Thank you.
Oh, you are?
Manager, he is. We are working on it.
Yeah, because there's a stop sign in front of my house.
Sure.
But half of the time, they don't stop in front of me.
There's no doubt the traffic has been hectic.
Yeah, and I know this on West Lake, they're going very fast now.
Yeah.
Because when I have to, come on, I have to go down and go all the way around. They, they, they just can't, they can't wait.
Sure.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you, Genevieve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I walk by your house all the time, and I see the same thing.
Any other audience comments? No? Do we have any email questions, or? No?
No.
Okay, very good. Moving on. Item number three, accept the motion for approval of agenda.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's. Motion for consent?
So moved.
Second? We got it. We got everybody. We had two at the same time?
Yeah.
We're good to go.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's. Good. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. We have a waste management annual report today from Jeff Saban, the manager of public sector waste management. Jeff, come on up. Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and council members, vice mayor, council members and staff. For the record, Jeff Saban, government affairs manager for waste management, representing waste management, and now it's, I'm communicating, it's WM.
WM, yeah.
I know I'm in trouble.
Oh.
It's, yeah, Waste Management decided to go through a branding, rebranding, and adopted the WM, similar to other large corporations. And I think the rationale behind it was that we're changing our directive as a company, and we're embracing sustainable initiatives, and wanted to be, and strive to be a solutions company versus just the standard waste hauler and waste. So I think that is the initiative behind the rebranding of our company. Here with me tonight, representing WM of Palm Beach, I've got Carlos Diaz.
Good evening.
And Jono Ko, both of which report and oversee operations here in this fine town of Lake Clark Shores. Very proud of not only our, our team, but I'll talk a little bit more about it as we go through the presentation. And I handed the remote to Joe, because he knows sometimes I can get long-winded, so I know when he changes the slide, it's time for me to move on. So, see? Just like that. Okay, so that's it. I promised to be brief and go through the presentation, and we'll entertain any questions or anything you have for me at the end. As you know, WM is a Fortune 250 company founded way back when by Wayne Heising and Dean Bonchrock. This is just an illustration of our footprint in North America, and the size of our team is expanding. It's greater than 48. We need to, we need to update that particular slide, but we're very proud of the coverage and our commitment to North America. Years ago, we decided to brand and go farther into Europe, and we decided, no, that doesn't work well for us. So our home is the United USA, and we're happy that, and Canada as well. Circularity, this was really the slide that I wanted to speak very briefly about, and this is our commitment to recycling, reuse, diversion of waste, and our long-term focus of zero waste. That is a WM-embraced project. It's long, it will be in the future, but a waste company, in this case, reducing waste, people ask why? Well, it's the right thing to do. It's good for the economy. And, and I think that domestically, if we move in the direction over the next 20 years, I think every, we will never have to ship another ton of anything outside our borders, and we'll be able to process everything here. And our big goal is to basically double the 14 million tons of material that we capture, recycle, and reuse every year to 25 by 2030. That's why I kept the slide on. 2030, we want to double the 14, actually to go to 25 million tons of recovered materials. In the state of Florida, we have a number of facilities. We can go to the next one. Perfect. This is our footprint of the state of Florida. The reason I show this, this slide, as well as shows the resources that we have as a company, and how we are invested in the state of Florida, and the size of the business unit that services and provides the support for all of our districts and divisions across the state. It all comes to here. WM of Palm Beach, if and when we ever had an issue with a storm event, we have sister companies to the south, to the north, to the east and west that we can draw upon, similar to what happened on the west coast, where one of our divisions in, in Fort Myers was actually flooded completely and lost all 60 vehicles to flooding. We were able to respond throughout the state to get a new fleet over and never missed a beat in terms of collection to our customers. That's really the commitment we have, and none of it would happen without the great, the greatest asset, and that's our, the human element, our employees. They're our true treasure, and next slide, we'll talk a little bit about our people that serve not only this community, but, as I said, throughout the state of Florida. We're more focused on our team here. We're a little partial. We love our team, and they do a great job, and we've been serving the town for quite some time.
Decades.
You said it. Thank you. And, and we'd like to continue that as, as well. Our service teams are trained, and, and I'll talk about the onboarding as well, but you can see the tenure, 10-plus, 100 years of, of experience and what that brings to the town in firms, in terms of familiarity with your neighborhoods, your communities, and everything that's going, oh, we're gonna go on vacation.
You gonna talk about the beach?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Sorry, I must have pressed the wrong button here.
No problem. That's a cue. We have a, we have a code.
Kind of slow.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, sorry.
Automation. As you, as you well know, we're on the, the cart, automated cart system for the town, very happy about that, and we're trying to expand. It is the way, it's the way we have to go. We've addressed it nationally, and currently, we try not to purchase any other than automated, automated side loaders to serve these carts throughout all the communities we serve. The benefits of automatic collection is obvious. It reduces the amount of labor and exposure for our employees. To be on the back of a rear loader every day of the, of the week, servicing customers is really tolling and taxing on folks. And it, and it's unsafe in many conditions, especially on the, on roadways that have high traffic. We talked about that earlier. They want to get around the truck and sometimes don't make it. So we, we want to protect our folks. Safety is, but curb appeal and, and everything that goes along with automated service. Go ahead, Joe. We're good. Technology, very briefly. Most of the vehicles that we purchase today are massive, and we have an advantage as a company of size. We, we have some buying power in terms of specialized trucks, which they all are, and they come with a tremendous amount of technology for all the right reasons, safeties and sensors. And now the newer trucks, especially the automatic side loaders are compressed natural gas powered. We'll talk about that a little bit, but more about the fact that the cost of those trucks now are exceeding over half a million dollars.
Wow.
So we have a huge investment in our fleet, and for all the right reasons, many of the other firms don't have the same equipment that we do, but we specify it before a driver can even get on a truck. It's so important. You can go to the next one as well. Onboarding and our training. Before we even hire, even hire someone to drive and operate one of our vehicles, they go to a two-week training session, our Fort Myers Training Center, where they fully integrate and understand our philosophy and our culture, many of which show up and don't make it through, but we've made a two-week, two-week commitment. It's better than making a 90-day, 120-day for someone to fall out after we put all this investment. People realize it's just not for them. But with the new automatic side loaders, we're attracting younger generations to operate. They're very good at the joystick. And also, older folks like me that can still drive an automatic side loader well into my whatever. I have to tell you how old I am, 60-something. But we have folks that are over 70 that have been with us for 50 years, and we're very proud of that fact. But this new technology and training that we put our, the rigor that we put our folks through before they're even allowed to get on our truck is significant. And then at the end of that, when they do shine and prosper and are successful, they're eligible for incredible benefits that we provide to them as a form of retention, to keep them engaged and also with us for a long, long time, as you could see with our tenured employees. So we're very happy about that. We, every year, increase the benefit packages. We encourage savings, 401K. We have incredible medical coverages as well. For the entire family, we have educational outreach and forward education as well. It's all included in the benefit packages as a retention. Joe? Oh, I include this slide, and this is our communication, and how, how important is communicating with our residents incredibly, as you well know. So we provide WM collateral, and one of which is the leave behind. That's the tag where, and I evaluated our history with the town and the number of complaints and calls we get, and a lot of them are just things that if we, and we try and we do tag, right? So a takeaway from tonight is that we're going to definitely be focused, because I noticed on some of them, there are the bulk piles and those larger things where people would call in. We leave a tag behind. It has all the information. It saves the phone call. They know that we're going to respond back and when. And that's a key communication piece that we want to make, make sure that we're utilizing throughout the, throughout the town all the time. And then recycle right, and the other brochures, we can update that and talk to your town administrator, town manager about that, and how we can accentuate including information and providing it to your residents. What else do I have? Oh, communication. I don't even want to talk about storms. But we do have a website and a link that we provide and we send out prior to, to all of our public sector partners, where residents can go right online, click on the link and find out what's going on. Will there be a suspension of service? When will it be resumed? And it's all an interactive map that all they have to do is hover over it. And obviously, they would hover over town of Lake Clark Shores, and it would pop up with the information of what the services are. Next, Joe. And we do that also for holidays. Oh, you already did it. So, yeah, and I think in Palm Beach County, even though contractually, there are three, I think, it's Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year, we work on New Year's Day. As long as the solid waste authority is open, and that's the other thing, we coordinate directly with the solid waste authority when we ever have storms, because when they know we're going to get tropical storm force winds that's predicted, and they want, don't want to subject their folks and their, their operations to it, they give us a heads up, and they send out mass emails, and we do the same to let our customers know when we're going to be suspending service, unfortunately, because we don't like doing that. Our alignment with local municipalities, of course, we've got, and, and the reason I use this slide, it describes the levels of service that we provide and how they're similar, similar levels of service, although we like to believe that we provide a level of service to, to this town better than others, but that, but it is the same, same level. And we're very proud of that and how it aligns. I think that's about wrap up. It is.
It is.
So, thank you so much. Just wanted to have some opportunity to, to say hi, to share information, and address any questions or concerns you may have for me.
Any questions?
Thank you, Jeff. Does, what percent of, of the stuff that goes in the blue and yellow bins actually gets recycled?
Great question. And if you talked to the authority, because you dual-stream, the separation keeps the materials cleaner. Less content, well, not totally contaminant-free, but they get a higher quality. So overall, the dual-stream probably gets about almost up to 80% of, of capture rate. I call that a capture rate, because that's what, what is the net product of the process. And so, yeah, and they're hanging their hat on that, that quality of, of materials to continue to dual, dual-stream and that collect it that way as well.
And that's up on, that goes with all the other garbage up to 45th Street area there?
Correct. They, their, their MRF, and their MRF material recycling facility is on 45th. It's on the south side before you make the big bend up to the burners and to the admin building at the solid waste authority on their property.
I, I, one more comment. I find that your, your team is very timely and, and puts it back, puts the can back where they found it, which I appreciate. You mentioned complaints. Are you getting a lot of complaints? And if you are, what are they, what are people complaining about?
Yeah, I, we get very few complaints. We're very proud of that fact. But I did want to go back and, and do a look back for the entire year of 2024, in case a question came up, and you asked me, how many complaints? And what were they, and how were they, you know? A few of them were, were cart-related, where they needed cart replacement. A number of them were actually where we did miss, and I, we're not really, we can detect, because all the trucks have GPS. So we know whether it was a late set out, and it wasn't actually a miss. It was someone rolled their cart out a little after the truck went by the other side. So that does happen, but we still recorded as, as a missed pickup either way. And, and then there was the yard waste, I think, and, and bulk yard waste, trimmings and things like that, where they do large tree trimming. Your agreement actually addresses that, where landscapers are required to provide the takeaway service or the disposal of the material under, under the agreement. But we know that doesn't always happen. So we don't split hairs with it either. If it gets set out, we don't know how it got there, and we'll remove it. Yeah, because it, it's not worth, worth the effort of the, of the phone call and the feedback, and then I get a
Text.
Right. A text message, and, yeah, can we get this taken care of? So.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm retired, so I'm very appreciative of your services, because I, when I walk, I get to see their actual, probably more other side than most people do, and I, they're very respectful. My other, my question is, I know they've talked about having some kind of disposal for lithium batteries. Is that coming in the future, or is there any movement on that?
Right now, all that I, I know is that the, the authority only has their, they have their convenience centers that are associated or, or connected to their transfer stations, where it's publicly accessed, where you can take all your batteries, both yours, your standard dry cell and your lithiums as well.
Push at some point, but I don't know how much momentum I've got.
That's really, because that is a special service. WM calls it at your door. So that is, that is a service. I just, would I have to look further into it and, and get back with your town manager to see if that's something that we do in this area? But we do, we, we do that in other places. It's kind of like a valet where you set the container out by your garage or something, once a month, or
They're not good for being in the
Thank you for saying that, because we have truck fires.
I've seen one. I've called him on one.
We have experienced more truck fires in the last 24 months than we have in the last 24 years.
That's crazy.
It's, yes.
I know that's more, that's even not just the regular disposable batteries. That's also like the Ryobee's, the portable batteries that people
Yes.
The big ones.
The big ones. Yep, and they just have to get mixed with the wrong other material and combustion.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Nip that in the bud, especially for the fire service.
Yep. Yep. We hate that call. We, we really do. Because then you have to choose where you're going to dump it out, and that's not really a good thing.
So I don't have a question, just a quick comment. I have a four-year-old who thinks that the guys coming on the truck are like Batman and Superman, and they are just so wonderful and beep for him and wave at him. So I just, I think that, that goes a long way for me. So he thinks they're awesome.
Thank you. That's how we start the ambassadorship.
Jeff, thank you to you and your team. Your guys are always very respectful, and they're always serving and willing to help in any capacity, so I appreciate that leadership there. I wanted to know, is there any education piece that are happening on the batteries for, that you guys are doing right now to kind of push that message out to all the communities that you serve about the batteries and disposal and proper disposal? Because I, I haven't personally seen anything, so I didn't know if there was something or some way to access some of that information.
Thank you. And yes, we as a company, but also in association with all of the haulers at the state level, are addressing this with, with our legislative delegation. And, but in terms of communication, yes, we have in-house developed a battery best practices piece, and I'll get
Solid Waste.
A draft in the
Solid Waste Authority has with the Fire Department.
Fabulous.
And we've had them in.
Yeah.
Solid Waste Authority has given us a presentation regarding disposal of all of that.
Right.
And we have brochures.
They'll come again.
Yeah.
That's something you should do often.
It's exactly. It's never enough, communication.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
When are we up for renewal?
Soon.
It's soon. Well, we were part of, I was, when we did it with Ellen Smith, our first one. Your crews are very good. I have two other locations where they each have different service providers. You guys are, you know, way above that, so thank you very much.
I'd like to have discussions with your town manager with your direction, obviously, so.
We'll, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Have a great
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Chief Martinez, you're up. How are you, sir?
Make sure Jeff takes you to dinner. Would you like it, or would you like me to? Okay. Yeah, it's a three-second delay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon.
First and foremost, thank you for inviting me to the barbecue. Wife loved it, daughter loved it. Food was amazing. We still talk about it. It was a great experience. It was, it was bigger and better than I thought it was going to be.
Good.
A large turnout, so thank you all for inviting me to that. The, just to jump on the subject, I can answer his fires and the, his fire question and the garbage trucks, its batteries. It's an ongoing problem we're having. Actually, I have a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss. It's, it's an epidemic. I mean, there's, there's no solution to it right now. We're just putting Band-Aids. It's whether it's solid-state batteries or EV vehicles. The problem is they produce their own oxygen. Usually, we smother the fires and take away the oxygen, and they're producing their own, so they're just going to keep on burning, and they're burning hotter and hotter and hotter. So if you have a test or anything, try to park it outside, golf carts, try to keep them outside the garage. That's most of the fires we get nowadays. So I just want to answer his question. To pick up on your question on the, how much of the garbage actually gets recycled? I love it, because I wonder it every time. Every time they pick up, my, my wife makes me throw all the stuff in that bin, and it's extra work, and I'm like, they're throwing it in the same spot. So I'm glad you asked that question. I was bummed that I was the second annual report today, because I'm, everybody's bored, probably. Not saying his presentation was boring, but mine's probably going to be not as enlightening. I'm going to show, I'm going to present to you all my annual report, not mine, your annual report for, from Palm Beach County Fire Rescue to the town of Lake Clark Shores. Please feel free to back and forth feedback to make this not as painful. I provided you guys copies last, last time I was here. I realized that was a mistake. I probably should have gave it to you today, but I'll learn for next time. So a little bit about myself. You guys know that I just recently got promoted in the month of November. Been in the department about 18 years. Went up the ranks from firefighter to lieutenant to captain to battalion chief, and now district chief, which is basically workdays, a day schedule. Up there on the top, you're going to see our fire chief. He's the fire chief of the actual, the whole department. I look over five municipalities. He's the actual fire chief in our department. Most of you got to meet my wife. I have two kids, and basically, no hobbies now. I just work. So I should have, should have thought about it before I switched over. Just kidding. I'm loving it. I actually got, I feel like I'm not drowning anymore. I think I said that last schedule. I feel like I have time now, and I feel like I'm not running behind. The slide you see now is a customer satisfaction survey. Every time we run a call, we send out a customer satisfaction survey. Lake Clark Shores, we ran 310 calls last year. We got six responses, which is pretty good compared to what we normally get. We got a over, 100% overall satisfaction rate. That just basically means how did they feel with the service? Were they disappointed? Will, will they come back? Will they call back? So we constantly have a team monitoring our personnel, our customer service, and in the town of Lake Clark Shores, we did have 100% satisfaction survey. Now there, you see an image. I know you can't see it very well. It's just basically showing you our stations. We have 52 stations, 51 stations. We're getting our 52nd one built off lines on Lake Worth coming up soon. We range anywhere all the way up to Jupiter. As you can see, we do run on the beach. We have three stations on the beach, one in Juneau, where the police chief came from. We have one in Indian Town, and then we have one in Manalapan. We also go all the way out west to the Glades, South Bay, Pahokee, and Boglade. And then we go south to Boca Raton. We run about 157,000 calls a year, and we cover about 180 square land miles. So it's, it's large area. We're one of the biggest counties size-wise. Miami-Dade isn't, you know, just has more stations, but it's just so dense. And that's what we've realized over the years. Palm Beach County, Miami, Broward, it's just getting more dense. It's not growing, but it's just getting more people are coming. So our call, our call volumes are going up. So that's something we take into consideration. Here's a basic map of your response zone, letting you know you guys are the area, the coverage. I keep on saying you guys, but y'all are the area coverage and But y'all are the area coverage in yellow. And there you could see kind of where our stations are, we have a third station thirty nine out to your west, which is the town of Palm Springs. And then we also have station ninety three, which is basically off I ninety five Detroit and tenth. So you, there you see your basic coverage, basic stations coming to you, we have two stations on Lake Worth that can get to you as well, our station up there at thirty three. Now calls, last year we ran three hundred and ten calls, I don't know if you probably can't see in the picture, but eighty percent of those calls were medical calls. I know we're called the fire service, we're the fire department, we're heavily involved in EMS and something we've learned to embrace, accept and just realize over the years, bring buildings come sprinkler nowadays, we're a little more educated when it comes to not leaving out candles, not leaving pots on stoves, but um we realize that most of our calls are now EMS. So with that being said, we've, you know, ramped up the EMS division, we have our own EMS division in our department, constantly growing, it's our main focal point. We work under nine medical directors, most departments, maybe Miami-Dade works with a little more, but most departments have one or two medical directors, we have nine of them. We have Dr. Shecky, who's the medical director of the state, and then we have Dr. Hans Hevy, which is nationally known for pediatrics. That's just two out of the the nine that we have and you might know who I'm talking about. The hands heavy, he has his own app, he and he definitely got very popular off that app because they followed his name. So here, here's just a basic overview of the department as a whole. We run one hundred and fifty seven thousand calls, I said before, and if you look at that bar graph, it just continues to grow. And we're expecting to grow and grow up just because we're getting more dense. In-service units, I know you can read them there, but just to let you know, we do have five ALS, fifty five ALS rescues. Forty four, forty five now, ALS engines, we have four jet skis. We have seventeen to nineteen brush trucks, depending on the season. We have four tenders throughout the county and I'll explain what those units are, and I'm just rambling, you're probably, I don't even know what he's saying, but I'll explain to you what they are later on, I'm just giving you a basic overview. Those are your two stations, station thirty nine, ninety three, who run most of the calls within Lake Clark Shores. And then we have the neighboring stations thirty one, thirty three and ninety one. Those are our units, I don't know how big this was going to look, so basically you can tell there just know that every every unit in Palm Beach County that responds to your call or to your home is an ALS unit, advanced life support. The times of BLS has have, we've we've separated from because we realize most of our calls are medical. So even the people on a brush truck, which is forestry, they're paramedics as well. Most of our department is paramedics, we do hire EMTs and we do sponsor them to go to, we we hope they become paramedics. So they do stay EMTs, they limit their career, that's I kind of always tell them. Most you can be as a driver, but if you become a paramedic, you can be the fire chief if you want to. Now, these are some of the units we carry. On the top there, you're going to see a top left is going to be a tender, they carry about three thousand gallons of water. They bring us water to the scene, usually used in rural areas up in Loxahatchee type and Bell Glade. And and they also bring them to the highways. There's no high fire hydrants in the highways, so they're kind of like our portable fire hydrants. And depending on the magnitude, some of these dumpster truck fires that happen, I mean, there's there's not enough water to put them out. And overseas up in Europe, they actually have tankers that come next to these vehicles, they grab them with a forklift and they dump them in the tank and these, they've burned for another day. The study showed to let it burn, let it burn itself out, the the theory is let it consume itself. Because if we start fighting it and we're just put, we're basically just putting out the class A combustibles, which is the plastic, the seat belts, the seats. But we're not putting out the batteries, so we're just delaying the burn, so they're going up to twelve hours in burn, so so we're just getting a little more educated, on the top right, you're going to see a brush truck, they're deal with more more with forestry. The cool green truck is going to be, it's not a Miami-Dade truck. Because that's what they're known for, it's it's one of our dragons, they're at the airport, they carry about five hundred gallons of foam and three thousand gallons of water, so equal to a tender. Obviously, aviation firefighting is a little different, different fuels, so we need different types of foams. Again, the foam, what they do with the foam smothers the fire, takes away the oxygen and that's how we put it out. That's why these batteries are such an issue, that's why these smart vehicles are such an issue. At the bottom, on left, we use that during hurricane season or during flooding season, high water vehicles. It lets us gain access to some areas, whether somebody needs medical attention or they need to get out of their residence. So we we have two vehicles throughout the county of the, on those and what they do is basically just transport patients for us or get us to the scene, if sometimes there's areas that are extremely flooded, so it's just called a high water vehicle. On the bottom right there, you will see special ops truck. I never worked special ops, I did do my classes, I they're they're who the firefighters call when we need help. Usually we go to see and we figure, we can figure anything out, we at least we think we can. When we realize we can't, right before I came here, I had a gas leak in the on the turnpike, so we call them. They're they're, they have vast knowledge in hazardous materials. And when we we brought up the batteries, I forgot to mention, we were treating that battery as a hazardous material because of the runoff. With the product that's in there is hazardous to the environment as well as to, so we have to take into consideration. So any EV vehicle fires now that we get, we're getting a special operations response to it just because of the runoff of whatever's in that battery. These are the boring vehicles, my vehicles on the tops, chief officers, captains, we do have an airboat at the bottom left, we have two airboats out in South Bay and Bell Glade, usually they're going to lakes canals. And they actually helped us two weeks ago on a rollover, I don't know if you guys saw it in South Bay. I was on that call for four hours and it was just somebody entrapped vehicle on top of them and it's muck. So anytime we try to use a lift, it's pushing the ground down. So luckily we had our special operations team there and they assisted us with that call. And on the bottom right, just typical jet ski, it's for water rescues, we use them a lot out in thirty seven, Manalapan area and Lantana as well as up in Jupiter and Juneau. Last year, Lake Clark Shores had three three structure fires. When I say structure fires, it doesn't mean like a fully involved, because I'm sure y'all would have heard if there was a fire in your neighborhood or new town. But it could be a simple pot on the stove, so last year there were three of them in the neighborhood. Thankfully, that number is pretty low, which is pretty good. The pictures you see there are just pictures of some other fires that have gone on throughout the county, the one on the bottom left is the cover of this photo, I was on that call, it was Alpha Command. And basically Alpha Side of Structure, it was deemed the largest structure, wood frame structure fire, mansion fire in the last thirty years or something. And the way that came about was linseed oil, they were cleaning the floors with linseed oil and overnight it has a high flammable rate and that's what happened. That was after vehicle accidents, that's our second highest frequent call that we run, vehicle accidents. You'll see firefighters out on the road, I know sometimes it's frustrating because you're going into work, you're getting late because of traffic. So you'll see a big engine just crossed over and blocking lanes, that's that's protection. These are the, these are probably the most dangerous calls we run, more dangerous than fires. Troopers, that's why you'll see an engine take out a lane or two, it's to protect everybody in the working area, they call it the shadow. That's where we all work, that's to protect ourselves, it's not that they're trying to be something else, they're just protecting the civilians, the police officers as well as us, and it's proven, it's our most dangerous call, that's why they wear bunker gear. You're like, why are they wearing bunker gear in a, it's one for extrication when they're cutting up cars, the sharp edges, but two is protection. And all that reflection, so you can hopefully see them. This fire happened on the turnpike, not last year, not too long ago, not too far from here. It was basically a tanker carrying a thousand gallons of diesel, three hundred of gasoline and we had to put it out. It took a lot of tender operations, we had a whole operation, it took the special ops team to di- dam and divert the the products that were leaking. And eventually with enough foam, we were able to put that fire, but you know, it's one of our coolest pitchers, that's why I put it up there. Pretty impressive. Not going to bore you with that. Now here, you're going to see the types of calls and how many calls we ran in Lake Clark Shores, I have bad vision from this distance. I thought I had good vision. Basically, you had a total of one hundred and ninety two patient transports that year or this last year, this last fiscal year. Three of them were sepsis alerts, that's when someone has some type of infection and can lead to possible pneumonia or anything worse. We had three stroke alerts, we had one STEMI alert, which is a cardiac event. And then we had three trauma alerts within the town of Lake Clark Shores, anything bordering doesn't count. So those are just numbers for for in inside your community. That fourteen point four that you see there, it's way above the Nat, the national standard of nine point seven. Fourteen point four is a very high percentile for bringing patients back from cardiac arrest. And when I say bringing them back from cardiac arrest, you'll see our number to the left is twenty six percent. That's, that means we regained a heartbeat, ROSC, so we got returned spontaneous circulation. The number on the right, the fourteen point four percent is people who actually walked out of the hospital and came to meet us at the fire stations. So every time we save someone, every time we do, we have a meeting greet at the station, they get to meet the crew that saved them. And we had fourteen fourteen point four of them, which is a total of a hundred and six, made it back, which is a remarkable number, the national average is nine points up. Again, we lean more towards EMS and we're we're aware that's that's the ongoing event, we are an all hazards department. We all hazards, meaning we can mitigate anything, but EMS is such a big portion of it. I'm going to bring up whole blood now, I don't know if you guys or gals have heard of whole blood. Whole blood is the way the EMS is is heading. In trauma events, it's it's been known that first we have to stop the bleeding and second, we have to replace it with blood. For years, we've been replacing it with fluid, we've been diluting them and obviously we haven't had the highest success rate, now we're switching over to whole blood. Our whole blood bank is right off Okeechobee and the Turnpike, which is my station, station twenty three, and that's the whole blood, the whole blood bank for the whole county. So everybody from Bell Glade, up from Jupiter, down from Boca Raton, comes to that station to get whole blood. Whole blood expires every twenty six days, so it's a constant shelf life, we constantly have to rotate it. So when you go and you see the donating, try to donate, it's good for you too. We still pay for the whole blood, it's still, it's 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 pretty expensive, but we realize it's saving lives. The story here, that young lady right there, she has had a tonsillectomy six days prior. Why, why do we put her story there, it's because the gentleman that's right there, he's the district chief in Boca Raton, his own daughter faint or went unresponsive on him, she had a tonsillectomy six days later, he's getting her ready for school and he just doesn't see, she knows she's not seeming right, she's like groggy and then she just collapsed. I heard the nine one one dispatch call and he was very cool, calm and collective, he, he's actually one of our hazmat guys. Cool calm collective, he over the phone, he says, I need whole blood, he was able to, he was able to identify that they needed it right away. She was unresponsive when units got there, once they pushed the whole blood, within thirty seconds, she was up awake and talking. I call it the new Dextrose D fifty, it's it's incredible how it works, I've seen it work in front of me three times. I didn't think the person was going to make it, I saw it get pushed and it was incredible, so this is a new wave, new future, we're the first department in Palm Beach County to do it. There was one department prior to us, it was in Broward and this is kind of the way we're we're heading now, so that's just one of the big big new things we offer within within our department, it's the whole blood system. And hazardous materials, those guys in the big red suit right there, that's what hazmat hazmat is. It's a, basically you respond, it's it's definitely the most dangerous thing you go to because you don't know what you're dealing with. It's without a doubt, right there, they're in a class A suit. It could be anything from a simple chlorine leak to any ammonia phosphates or anything very hazardous that within one breath it'll knock them out. They're very well versed, very very knowledgeable, if you ever see the tankers coming down the road or any placards, those are identifiers of what the product may be and that's what we use, so if you ever see a big truck coming down with a number on it, that number means what they're carrying and that's how we kind of use the books and mitigate the issue. Under that, you're going to see dark water diving, when you think of our dive teams, we do have two dive teams, one out of Boca Raton, one out of Bell Glade. Sorry, three dive teams and one out of Southern, so that's the closest one to you. We have three dive teams, full full complements. What they do is they dive mostly in canals, car and canals are the most frequent calls we get with them. When you think of that diving, don't think of it as looking at reefs or fish or, once you submerge, it's zero visibility, it's completely black. As soon as you're, I actually took the course, took the lessons, but when I went to school, I was doing reefs, I was seeing fish, I was taking pictures, I had the GoPro. When I went to a real scene, it was completely dark, pitch, I was like, I'm out, it was pitch dark, pitch dark. So I I let that, let that certification pass. Because once you have that certification, they can pull you to one of those stations and you have to perform, because it's it's very high risk, very high risk, low reward, by the time we get into some of these calls, they can be out, you know, a ten minute response because it's a canal, nobody knows the name of the canal, nobody knows where they're at, so we're kind of just driving around. I don't know if you know how long your last underwater, it's not long. So it's, in my opinion, higher higher risk, low reward type of call, but we do it. Because there's a possibility, if you if you save one life with any of these programs, it was worth it, just ask the family, right, so that's why we do them. That's our training tower, you'll probably see it driving through Southern. If you drive on the turnpike, if you guys ever want to visit, ever want to do cool things, just let me know, I'll take you over there and we'll put on a demonstration. They just had the whole hazmat training there, the reason I bring up the program or the building is because everybody comes to our building kind of like down in there, everybody goes to the main building, it's the biggest building and all the other smaller departments come and train with us. They'll use our facility, they'll ask us for permissions, we have a full burn building, basically we could light that building on the bottom right, we could light it on fire however we want with encode. And you can simulate any type of fire, on top of that, we have a vertical ventilation prop, basically we had to do vertical ventilation on on a home. Attic fire, let's say there's a fire, we can't find, we put the hole over the fire, over over the heat signatures and we'll find it real quick. One thing fire likes is oxygen, so when it's in an attic, it doesn't have oxygen, but once you open the hole you'll be impressed. The the tower there, it's six stories tall, we just had Mayor Mayor Marina, she rappelled off of that. So, you know, one of our commissioners, so she she said after she did that experience with us, she went into the twenty story building. I found that out yesterday, she said that in one of her speeches, oh, that's pretty cool. So if you guys and gals ever want to go, you just let me know, we can make it happen. Here's how our department gives back, you know, usually we're just, what we do is a a serving career, but we also do things while off duty or on duty, but meaning for the community. On the top, we have muscular dystrophy. We, every time you guys see firefighters standing in front of Publix, what used to be in the streets, we used to, we used to ask for money in the streets, but it got dangerous, a bunch of us got, used to get run over. I would, I would get like wedding bands or cigarettes all the time because they would, they would just get there and they'll dump it. Now we just stand in front of Publix is because it's safer. The reason we collect that money, zero percent of it goes towards the firefighters and I want to make sure everyone understands that. It goes all to the Muscular Dystrophy Association. We have a a a small piece in our heart for it because one of our firefighters right now has two kids with muscular dystrophy, one recently passed away and the other one's about to pass and there's nothing you can do. They have Duchenne's disease, it's basically a disease that eases away your muscles. So we constantly raise money every year, it's always going to be during the Labor Day weekend. And that's why you'll see them out there. On the bottom, it's United Way and it's it's just a basic showing of that that thermometer you see there, in this, that's the whole county, not just fire rescue, that's the county in general. The red is firefighters, we donate about forty four percent, that's the firefighters donating themselves to the United Way, it's about, it's quite impressive number, I just can't read it from this distance. You know what, let me tell you, it's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars the firefighters donated last year. The county as a whole collected nine hundred and sixty, so we we donated about forty four percent within the fire service. Mobile integrated health is something that we added within the last, I would say, five years and this came from every time we would respond to a house, respond to someone's house, help them, we never, we never had like closure. We would just help them, take them to the hospital and we wouldn't know what happened with this person. So there was kind of like a gap there that, there was no, the the loop wasn't closed. So the mobile integrated health team started, what it does is basically our firefighters, when they respond to a call and they see you have some type of problem beyond whether it's addiction, say a teen pregnancy. You're falling a lot. A fall, they'll, they'll, they'll put you in a system and basically after hours after that call, we're going to have a team come follow up, check up on you at home. If you're falling a lot, we'll do fall, fall prevention, fall education and then we'll find out why you're falling and try to assist, maybe it could be as simple as a pair of socks. You know, the socks, the socks help tremendously, most people don't like to wear them. And then we have pregnancy outreach, as I said, for teens, so anytime our firefighters see anything if you're on a call, all they have to do is on their tablet while they're writing the report, they just flag it and now we have a separate team that's going to follow up. Of course, if the person is willing. Community risk reduction. I I do five presentations of these, you you all definitely use this the most, which is great. It's the basic community outreach, community education. I was just doing the yellow dot with officer over there. That's basically what we do, we do community outreach, we do so much, if you go to pvcfr.org, there's so many things our department offers, all you got to do is go in there, click and it could be any member of the community, it doesn't have to just they come and show you how to do CPR. um, they come and show you how to do CPR. They will not certify you to be CPR because that that requires an actual company, but they'll come and show you how to stop a bleed. They'll come and show you how to check, uh, how to use a fire extinguisher. All you gotta do is log on and request it. Okay? The, the, the town of Lake Clark Shore is definitely did use this, so somebody here is doing it and we appreciate that. Because we, we, we do like to see the, the use of it. You, you can't see the numbers here, but these are just basically inspections that we run every year. Um, annually, we run inspections on all your businesses. Uh, we're not there to shut them down or anything. We're just checking for hazards and making sure everything's running. All our, all our, all our buildings need to be checked for Knox boxes and make sure they're within code. If we see anything outrageous, then we'll, we'll meet, we'll mitigate that way, but we're constantly uh, performing inspections. And finally, this is a way to follow us on Facebook, Instagram and X. I don't, I think X used to be the old Twitter. Um, that's, that's how we stay relevant nowadays. You gotta click, tag, whatever. Um, and the two people you see right there are PIOs, they're Public Information Officers. They're the ones that in a big fire, big incident, big whatever it is, they'll be talking to the media, talking to the news. And that's all I have. You, any questions?
Do you have any questions for Chief Martinez?
Easy questions.
I appreciate I, how thorough your, um, your booklet was. I read it from cover to cover. And I was, actually, one thing that surprised me was that you have, you do, you have something called Tesla Training.
Yes.
I mean, it, it's a whole category on it.
It's a whole category itself, absolutely. It, they're a problem. It's a problem. It's gonna continue to be a problem. And I mean, I was just at a ribbon cutting for one of our House of Representatives, Deborah Tinder. And one of the gentlemen there was, um, the butt, he, he was in charge of Palm Tran. And he came up to me on the side, he goes, hey, we just received ten fully electric Palm Trans. And all I could think about was like, oh, he, he's telling me as a positive. And I could think of, I was like, oh, this is such a problem. Because if a, if a vehicle, a regular Tesla is so hard to put out, just imagine us, something of that size and magnitude. It's gonna continue being a problem. Um, education is of the utmost importance. Everybody throws their batteries in the garbage and that's what, that's what you see over there with the trash. Um, it's educating, educating the community. Uh, we'll work on putting the fires out. Fires will always be out. Um, if you see us not putting water on the fire and we're letting something burn, we're just letting it consume itself. It's on purpose, it's strategic. If we have water, we're just delaying it. And the studies have shown.
Are you carrying whole blood on the vehicles or do you have to get it from?
So we, so we have ten EMS captains, like ten battalion chiefs. So there's ten battalion chiefs that constantly run nine-one-one calls. Major nine-one-one calls. Then there's a EMS captain in each battalion. You guys, the one for here is out of Station twenty-three. Um, you also have one out of the Station thirty-four, which is Southern in the Turnpike. They carry whole blood with them. Anytime we see or we're responding and we see that we may need the blood, we'll dispatch them to come to already head our way. By the time we get an IV and set up, they're already here and we just put, we use it, takes about thirty seconds.
You only have to carry like O negative, so like the universal?
Yes, correct. It's a universal donor. Mm-hmm. And um, we get them through blood banks, that's all to us and um, we were having an issue before because they expire so quick. It's, I mean, it's twenty-five day shelf life. We're using things for a couple of years. And they're so expensive, but we've teamed up with St. Mary's Hospital now. And we're kind of doing a rotation since they use, they're, they are a trauma center. We have St. Mary's and we have Delray. Those are the two trauma centers in Palm Beach County. We noticed that, I mean, we told them our problem and they kind of gave us a solution saying, bring us what you're, what's about to expire, we'll use it on our next trauma patient. And then we'll be cycling it because we were, I mean, again, if you use it just one time, it was worth it.
Yeah, yeah.
But there was definitely a, a, a disposal waste, like sixty percent of it was getting disposed of.
Thank you. I just have two things. So thank you so much for all that you do. I'm just so impressed with police and fire and that there's people in this world willing to do what you're doing to save the lives of complete strangers like me and my family. So thank you. Um, second, is there a list on a website somewhere of things like linseed oil that like?
In, fire and? Yeah, well, that's just uh, research. I, I didn't hear that either to that fire, you know? Uh, that was a mansion fire. They had just under wood floors.
That's like a very.
They had just, they had just reeds surfaced, there were floors. It was, it was a way, it was the way they, they ventilated, they didn't ventilate the property properly and they didn't secure the oils. At least that's what came out of it. That was, it was all over the, I mean, it was impressive to watch because I was in the front of the house and I could see people running in the, in this Charlie Division. So in the back of that, by the lake, I could see them just clear it because it was wood frame. So you can see, it was one of the most impressive things I've seen. But yeah, that, that was the, that was the cause. At least that's what we were told.
Unfortunately for us, good is bad. So I, I'm very impressed with your, your qualifications and you've progressed many decades ahead of us. Uh, the whole blood's a big, big thing, EMS, uh, the diet program. Is your hazmat uh, cross-trained with technical rescue or is that?
Absolutely. Uh, so we have about two hundred and fifty-seven employees that are technical rescue. I'm one of them. Uh, technical rescue basically involves a bunch of classes, a bunch of hours. Um, and they're usually on user teams, like Mammy Data has their own user team. We don't have our own user team yet. Um, actually, we do local user team. We don't have a state-recognized national user team, but yes, everybody's cross-trained, especially at special ops, everybody has to be fully TRT.
Do you have one, one unit or multiple units?
We have uh, two stations, a total of six units.
Six have, six special?
So there'll be one rescue, one engine, everybody on, everybody at the station's fully certified. One engine, one rescue and one special ops unit at two stations. So that's six.
That unit is not fully managed if you need it, so if people jump on it?
No, it's fully staffed, fully staffed. Two personnel on the special ops unit and then three on everything else.
Even your water people or paramedics, your jet ski?
Mm-hmm. It's just the way we, it's, it's evolved that way. When I first got hired, it was like, there, there wasn't that many paramedics. I'm sure when you, when you were working, it was, it was one of you and then now it's three of us. Now, now we're just, we bounce ideas off each other.
You, you've got your, you've got your bases covered for sure. Between the airboats and jet skis, you're.
Yeah, and yeah, that's, that's progressed over time. So when I first started here, I mean, we didn't experience those calls and now we've just noticed getting more dense, we're getting busier and it's happening. So the department's educated.
And I know that EMS is, is, is always gonna be number one.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Educate the public, the public, you know, yes, we're fire rescue, but rescue is where we have the most impact because of fire prevention.
Yeah, out of the hundred fifty-seven thousand calls we ran, like a hundred and thirty of them were medical. This is, it's the way we eat.
Well, I'm very proud to have you in our, in our, in our town.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you so much, you and your team. I did have a question. Speaking of education, uh, we have a seniors deal here called footprints.
Okay.
And I don't know if we've had Chief come on and speak, Joe, but would love to have you come on and educate our seniors on some of the things that they can do to protect themselves and.
Um, This morning I had um, my team go out to teach seniors how to use fire extinguisher. Yeah, so it's, it's, we have a commu- a full community risk reduction team. They're fully staffed. It's about ten, ten of them. And they, they're assigned to different areas of the county.
Okay.
And all you gotta do is tell me what, what you would like, what you need, and that come out and they, they'll definitely. And on your annual report, there's a long list of what they offer. You go to PBCFR dot org, click on community risk reduction. I mean, the list is massive.
Yeah, that would be incredible. Um, if we can get
Absolutely.
Our town connected with that community outreach team because I think talking about education is a lot to be learned. And even if they know it, it's always good to reinforce it, just kind of like the batteries, where there has been some education, but now it's up again. So reeducating the public is another big piece of part of that continual learning.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate that. But again, thank you tonight for your presentation. Thank you, your team and all the hard work that you.
Thank you for having me.
Chief, uh, let me ask a question regarding your uh, fire retardants that contain the PFOS. Is there any news that you could share with us with any new science in the science of fighting fires to replace the forever chemical and when you're showing a lot of those fires that you put on there and use with foam, that's what's in there.
Correct. So, and, and, and we just went away from the foam. We're, we're trying to get healthier foam for us.
Sure.
Because it's a, it's a big concern because, you know, cancerous particles within the foam. Um, I know we just replaced all our foam in the department and it was mainly because of that. Now I can't say they removed it completely.
It's, well, it's on the thing. I was, you know, I'm part of the um, uh, hazmat team there. The, the president has hazmat team that travels with him everywhere he goes when he's here. So it's one of those things, it's a big thing. And I know there's these hotspots with all the PFOS around and it is a forever chemical and it gets in the water and that's where it caused the problem. I just, you know, science is always evolving. And you learn something new. There's chemicals and everything. So I was just curious and.
The international is, is fighting up the battle with the industry.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, they're, just in the past couple of years, they just started, they installed a lawsuit. It took a lot of gumption to do it because it, you know, they're powerful lobbyists.
Yeah, well, that was my first thought is the firefighters being exposed to it because we were just in Tallahassee and had a pow-wow with, I don't know, ten or fifteen firefighters up, uh, you know, in the, in the house and you know, they were telling us the war stories and I was sitting there thinking them because they were talking about the bill that they're fighting for, for cancer. And my thoughts were like, hmm, you know, it seems like a no-brainer to me if they're providing you with something that they know causes that. I don't see what the issue is, you know?
Yeah, and the fuels have changed over time. Um, long, long ago, long before my time, it was just basically wood and some other class A's that would burn, you know, cleaner, cleaner combustibles. Now, I mean, the most toxic things in these rooms, tables and chairs, uh, they're full.
Your chemicals in almost every single little.
I mean, they look nice. Uh, when they're burning, they're just not good for you. That's why we all wear tanks. Before they just, um, long ago, they used to just wear their mustaches. It was their filtration device.
Yeah.
Um, now we, I mean, we've gotten so much smarter, so much, we have.
I don't remember those days, but Bridget.
We have a decon truck that goes out after every fire, washes down the firefighter, replaces their gear. Um, because of these threats, these carcinogens.
All right, well, for your all's sake, I hope that they find, you know, a solution to that.
I hope so too. I'll inquire about that and hopefully have something next, next meeting. Better answer, but I definitely don't have an answer for you.
Okay, well, there's no further questions. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for educating us and.
Thank you for having me.
Our attention.
And I'll get it, I'll go together with them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, let's see. We have no quasi-judicial proceedings, no public hearing. We'll move on to unfinished business. Joe, I'm gonna turn this over to you for your request for uh, the pension actuarial study.
Yes, a- a- as you know, uh, we've been talking about this for several months now. And for the audience, just to know, our public safety mainly is not in the market when it comes to pension and retirement benefits. Just to give you one example, if you work for the county or you work for the, a state trooper or the state, the, the state contributes thirty-three percent to your retirement. We contribute nine. So we're not even close to being in the market. So we're exploring uh, the options out there. One of the options is to have our own pension. And this is a big decision that will be very material when we ever get to the decision after we explore. So one of the things we can do is get an actuarial to actually give us hard numbers or good estimates on if we start our own pension, which is called a pipe, private pension, where we get money from the state to help us with that. But also we'll know a little bit more of what, they'll do a consensus of what our officers, who they're at right now, what age they are, what, when they'll possibly retire. And they'll give us some hard numbers on estimates. So somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, they'll give us an estimate. So I highly recommend that. So we can make a better educated decision whenever we make that decision. So that's what I'm asking for.
Should we have a motion?
Motion to do the actual study.
You can read that motion.
Staff recommends that the town council approve funding not to exceed two thousand dollars for an actuarial study to estimate the cost of sharing of starting a town police-defined benefit pension plan. No.
What he said? Okay, second?
I second it.
All those in favor? Carrie's five zero. Okay, Joe, once again, Pine Tree Bridge Lights.
Yes, as you know, uh, just to give you an update, uh, we were looking at making the actual walls or the barriers to the bridge. Uh, making them more user-friendly, more beautiful, more pleasant. Uh, we, we were told, no, we can't change the bottom concrete portion, but we can change the top rails. So we're gonna show you a picture of the top rails that we're now changing them to. Uh, this is, uh, thank you, Emily. That is what, instead of a bullet rail, which you'll see on Florida Mango, we, we changed it for sixteen thousand dollars. You guys approved up to seventy thousand. We can change it. We have already signed the, actually, we already signed the change order to change it to that railing. Um, so, so we can talk about now complementing it with light poles. Because we got a ruling from our town attorney that we can have the CRA pay for fifty percent of the project, which is two poles out of the four. So the poles roughly run about five thousand dollars, uh, what we're showing you today. Um, obviously, we want to be ahead of the curve, so we're a little ahead of the curve. Um, we didn't, we didn't get you a change order yet or anything like that, but we want to see what kind of styles you like. So we did a little survey, uh, thank you again, of what we have out there. Um, the one on the left is what we have on one of our bridges right now, one of our bridges right now. And the others are in parks. And can you lower that a little bit? Um, but there's, that's what we have in town. Uh, one of the things we'd like to do is have less li- uh, light pollution if possible because it's next to residential neighborhoods. So if you go to the next page, you'll see a couple of examples of what we found. Um, these are type A and type B and sec- we, the next page would be type C and D, but these are more roundy, these poles can be fluted and they can, or they can be round. The, the next picture of C and D, uh, those poles cannot be round, uh, they're, they're square. As you can see, that it's more of a square design. But as you can see, we showed you the railing system that we're, that you already approved is more of a circular or round uh, railing. So we just want to get your input now. Uh, obviously, we, we'll talk about banners and colors. Um, you know, that we can put a, a pole on the, on the, I'm sorry, a horizontal pole on the pole to, to hang banners or street signs or something of that knowledge and color. But we want to get your input of what you like in any of these four poles. There's anything that you like in these four poles. And all of them are downlighting, which again, will reduce uh, light pollution. So please.
I'll chime in.
Please.
Um, as I drove over here, I passed three bridges that all had the, the, um, the first light.
The acorn.
Yeah, the acorn light.
Yes.
Yeah, there was three of our bridges between my house and here had that light.
Right.
Um, I would, I think that once that, that the, the, this particular supplier has shown us are kind of utilitarian and, 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 and not elegant. And they might be more appropriate for a walkway in the park as opposed to a, a, a entrance to, to, to town.
I actually agree with you.
You seem so surprised.
Um, I love our traditional light posts and I love when we decorate them for Christmas and I would hate to see them be these like new industrial lights that were in the packet. Um, I don't have the three options in front of me, but when we, when I saw them printed, the one on the left, I would, I would carry through. I think they're classic and lovely.
And you're referring to figure one?
Is it, it's the, like the one that we have on the, um, yes.
It's, yeah. Yeah, we're just giving me, us direction. So yes, if, if you like the traditional look of the acorn, that's will, will get you a change order. You know, I just need a consensus of where we gotta go. I, I looked at lights even in Armani, you know, Italy, just to look at, they have three of those acorns and they're beautiful when you drive down just to see.
You also, you need us to approve the expenditure too.
Uh, just, uh, just up, but not the fixture yet because I'm, you know, just, well, I want to make sure you're serious about the change order instead of doing the research. Right, so it would be good to fund the project, yes.
I, I actually like number three, the downlighting. Uh, the ones in here a little more modern, the, the ones that are later in the packet. But number three is like the one in the park. Uh, it kind of fits to me, the town, a town style. But it also gets you that, gets that more of the light pollution. It gets you direct, if somebody's under it, it gets you the light. Somebody's walking and it doesn't, at least I know in the park, I've had uh, residents tell me that, that these, the other two kind of lights are blinding in the house. When these lights go on, it's not, it's, yes, you're getting the, you're lighting the walkway, but you're also getting a lot of extra light pollution that is not doing, that doesn't really benefit. So I like the style of the number three because it's, it's, it's still got the town facade, at least to me, it seems like a town type lighting, but it also got the security of the downlighting. And it's, it's a, I, I just, that's prefer that. I think it's a, it's, it's not going out over the top and being modern and the new, the new design. I think these fit for man functions. That's just my opinion.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yeah.
To not necessarily pick which one, even though you would like that to happen tonight, but you'd need the motion to move forward with that. Before we do that, ladies, did, we talked about having the downlighting throughout the parks too. That's still the plan. Uh, with, you know, what, I know you guys are gonna talk to us later, just kind of tying that all in together would be nice. So that we have some uniformity since it is the entryway and it, you know, should look elegant. I do agree with both of you. So you, you have a game plan. Do you have any other options that you could present us or? So you, you have a game plan. Do you have any other options that you could present us or, um, in terms of lighting that maybe you're thinking about, or these are just a few options that, uh, Joe has provided us with? Yes, please come up. I know you're going to talk later as well.
Hi, good evening. Nicole Plunkett, Collier in Hearing. Uh, we haven't gotten to the point of picking, uh, specific palettes or ideas related to landscape or lighting or theming, but now that we have the community survey that which we're going to present to you tonight, Michael and I are going to present to you. That's going to be the next step. And so this is actually great for us to hear because we're going to incorporate that into the next step of this progress.
So if there's a choice here tonight, you could work within that realm?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you. All right, so what, what do we, what do we have here?
Uh, one thought actually, uh, is in, in terms of light pollution, you know, it's a small bridge, so they don't need to be twelve feet tall. If they were a little lower, that might solve that issue.
The ones in the park aren't that tall and they're still, they're still shining in the.
But most of the ones in the park are not downlighting. They're the, they're the round one where it goes out and it creates the pollution. I particularly like the downlighting as well. I think it's nice. It's, 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 you know.
I think it's classy.
It is. And it also keeps from shining into people's, you know, backyards, their, their homes or floor rooms, whatever it may be. So, let me just look at something here.
Is it, um, I mean, I like the consistency of having, if we're having bridge lights for them all to look uniform. Meaning like every bridge has the same kind of lights when you cross the bridge and not one bridge has one kind of light, the next bridge has this kind of lights and it looks like we just kind of mosh past a bunch of different lights together. Um, I would love to know for that figure one, for consistency purposes, if we could some, in some capacity, figure out how to not have that pollution of light there. Uh, and I don't know if that's just meaning the light bulb needs to be a l- lower density for brightness or or what can be done there. But I like the idea. I like figure three fine, but if I had to go with that for pollution of light, we couldn't find a solution. But I do like the idea of having all of the bridges having the same type, style of lighting. To me, that just means you're in this community in Lake Clark Shores. This is what it looks like when you're on our bridges. It doesn't look one way when you cross one bridge versus crossing another bridge is my, is my opinion. So just from a uniform standpoint.
I, I concur to it. No matter what, whatever design is decided that we should have it, even if it's phase one with the bridge.
That's food for thought, for sure.
Yeah, this is phase one and then phase two, you know, do the rest of it because there's only two other bridges, uh, two of the bridges, a total of three.
The CRA can only pay for the ones at the bridge, correct?
Only half of the one.
Only half.
Only half of that one.
Right.
So it's a separate project to, to, to create the uniform. And there's a lot of things that we need to do in this town to become up to speed on uniformity. And I agree that I would, whatever lighting is decided that they're all the same. I just prefer the downlighting because I know the security of the lighting and everything else.
Is there, is there one that is like, that police recommend is a safer lighting option?
Is there a safer lighting?
Yeah, like is the downlighting better for?
Well, there's different types of lighting. Roadway would be one type of lighting and then you're talking about the parks and stuff would be a different type of lighting and different type of, um, wattage on the bulbs and, and everything. Some will be brighter. You see the, the streets are up higher, but they're not as bright, but they spread out. And in, in the, in your parks, they would be lower. So you could see where you were walking or what in the bushes or shrubbery.
You know, actually, and I was, one of the recommendations in here was four thousand. It's something like twenty-seven hundred is a, as a yellower, warmer light as opposed to a cooler blue fluorescent kind of light. So I think we might want to keep it in the warmer tone as well.
Joe, is there any other, other than this one? Because I did, you're giving these two examples of the acorn type lights and then you haven't given the one example of the downlight. Is there other than these here? Because these are to me a little modern and out of the, the realm of a style that, that we're looking for in the town. Is there any more other options for the downlighting as well as the acorn lighting?
Sure.
Style wise?
Yes, of course. It, it's, after you pick a type of one, I can get several options of that type. If, if available.
So we're thinking the downlighting for sure. No?
I'm not.
No?
I like, I am. I like, I like figure one to be consistent with what the, the three other bridges.
Figure one, like the ones that are on the other bridge?
Yeah, we have three bridges.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are all, all the bridges have the same lighting?
No.
No, they're, so they're all different right now. No, no, three bridges have figure one on them. I drove, I drove past them on my way over.
They're not exactly the same fixture, but they're, they're acorn lights.
They're, they're, they're.
Yeah.
They're black acorn lights.
Correct. It's just not the same.
So.
No, figure one, the, the, the photograph.
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
He said that they're not all, I'm asking Joe, he said, I'm a.
Well, I, I believe you're both right. It, they're all, all acorn lights, but they're just not the same manufacturer and fixture, that's all.
Does one provide, Joe, with that being said, more lighting that, you know, kind of gets into the neighbors' windows and all that kind of stuff that we want to avoid? Is there uh, any one particular light that does a little bit more of?
Yeah, and any of these with downlighting, uh, they're all pretty much downlighting.
No, I mean, with the acorn lights that we currently already have, like different in the, oh, the different lights.
That there, you see right into me, their light is right there. They, they do light the whole area, but there's a lot of light pollution with those.
A lot of light pollution.
But they're, they're pretty. It's not an easy decision. That's why. But.
Yeah.
I, I've had, I had to.
I had, and the reason I asked, um, chief about this is because I had always been taught that the lighting that floods an area is safer in a park or an area that had, like you would have to do extensive downlighting throughout a park. I know we're only talking about the foot of the bridge. Um, in order to make that space safe for someone. So that's why I had brought it up. Is there the possibility of exploring that? More in the public safety realm?
Yeah, I brought this to.
That space leading into the park is.
I'm trying to bring this as early as possible, so this way we can talk about it, you know, get it right.
Like when I was in college, they literally removed all of our downlighting because of an incident that had taken place in between the gaps of the downlights and replaced them with like these floodlights. That's what's literally in my head right now over this conversation.
So we could tech- technically pass a motion that says, um, you know, we're giving you uh, an expenditure not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. So we get that in place, but then also look at different options.
Correct.
Yeah. So how, how does everybody feel about that? We'll make the motion not to exceed thirty thousand.
We got it, we got it.
Oh, come up, please. Cat, got your tongue, Claudine? Just say Gregory, what are you ignoring me?
Well, I become quieter. Uh, Claudine Vasseur, six nine oh four Venetian Way. Uh, well, I invite any of you to come to my garden and look at night, the difference between the downlights and the lights you're talking of. The downlight, you can see who is walking. The other lights, you can't. Because they are bright and you can see the, the trees and it's, it's bright. But you cannot see who is walking underneath. You can't. You just can't. And there is one down, down, uh, light. You have to see the spend that one has, that you can see somebody walking. And then once they arrive on the classic lights, you don't see them anymore. You can't, you just cannot see them because the lights are and that doesn't change if you put a lower voltage.
Well, I, I appreciate you making that comment. I would like the opportunity.
You are, as I tell you.
Are lighting experts up here.
As I, I mean, I'm on first row to, to, uh, to show you.
I don't think we're selecting a, a type of light this evening.
So.
Discussed.
For me, a, a downlight, okay, maybe you think it's too modern of what, but if you move forward on, on, on uh, upgrading a town, I think you should also think a bit more modern, you know, and not returning constantly to classic, basic. What you can think is go to a bit more modern and with the time, if you have more money, maybe perhaps change the older lights so that they all match, if that's what you like, that they all match. But the, the, the downlight is really, you need to see it. You need to see it.
Where, where is it located at?
Uh, well, you come to my garden.
I'm Pine Tree Park, okay.
Yeah.
She has both right across the street from that.
Yeah, I am in front, so you can see very well what I mean when it's dark and you want to see what's going on in the park. And when you walk in the park, it's also nicer, the downlight than uplights.
Thank you.
So make an appointment and you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, we have some comments online too.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, Casey Boyers, uh, asked, do we have a recommendation for the lighting from an engineer?
The lights where?
From an engineer.
From an engineer.
Yeah, that, this, yes, that this was done with the help of an engineer.
Yeah, this is the engineers through the bridge and we all have our landscape architects input as well.
And then, uh, there's.
Correct, landscape architects, yes.
Then there's Michael Orwitz that would like to speak. I'm going to unmute him.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi. Uh, I've had a conversation with, with Joe, uh, the town manager about the new streetlights that were installed a couple of years ago and how they are not downlights and they do shine right into oncoming cars' eyes. And if you turn from Pine Tree on Beta where I live, drive east on Beta Circle and the trap, the street light right outside my house shines down Beta Circle and you can't see pedestrians or bicycles or animals in the road because the light is shining in your eyes. Certainly not something we want near the bridge where we want people not running over the bridge or hitting pedestrians. Downlighting is the only way to go. Um, and hopefully we'll buy lights that we can change the color temperature and the lumen output. Uh, modern lights are adjustable, so we don't need to decide what color and what lumens, but the dispersion pattern is something we need. And on the bridges, when people are turning in, especially in bad weather, we don't want bright lights shining in their eyes. So I'm glad to talk more about it with Joe or anyone at a later time. Like the previous speaker said, please come, turn east on Beta at night, Beta Circle to the south. Uh, one, and you'll see the oncoming, the light shining right in your eyes from this new street light.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any, is there, is there anything else before we move on?
No, that's it.
That's it?
Yes.
I made a quick comment.
Yes.
And I think, uh, unfortunately, your experience was they probably didn't have them spread out enough, so you, you had blind spots and that's why they changed the lighting now. So I, I mean, hopefully we'll explore this further and.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments because I think, like I said before, none of us are lighting experts and it hasn't been something, um, that we've probably been spending every minute analyzing and it deserves to be analyzed.
And, you know, long term, I mean, obviously it's going to be a cost issue. I'd like to see the town, whatever lighting goes, go down all the streets, you know, because I don't, right now there's pockets that are way overlit and there's pockets that are, you look down the street and it's dark. So neither, neither one of those are, are a great option. So starting with whatever we just, we decide, I think, hopefully we can, uh, push that in the future to have a consistency lighting throughout the town.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor. Um, want to approve, make a motion to approve the expenditure not to exceed thirty thousand for the purchase installation of two light poles on the south side of the Pine Tree Lane Bridge. In addition to selecting the design of the lights, is that what we want to do?
I, I, I really need the commitment of just the purchase. So the first part's fine and we can continue to work on the design.
Let me amend that.
Okay.
Motion then, uh, we'd like to approve an expenditure not to exceed thirty thousand for the purchase installation of the two light poles on the south side of Pine Tree Lane Bridge.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's.
So I have the commitment. So, so we'll, we'll work on, um, what I'm hearing is work on more downlight and give you an option. And then I'd like to work with Nicole and we can, to, to also get their input, um, and give you a couple more options.
And I'd like, I'd like to still consider the acorn lights as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
No problem. I'll, I'll get some more options on that.
And maybe, I, I understand lighting well, but maybe some more education on both and what they, how they, their output is and advantages and disadvantages of both of them.
Yeah, Claudia's comment is very well taken because right across the street from our house, you just go to Pine Tree Park, you'll see the two, th- those two pictures, one and three.
Options.
The two options, thank you. One and three pit, uh, are, no, I'm sorry, two and three are right there in that park. Yeah, so you could just see it. You can just actually see the difference. So we'll, we'll work on it, but I just would like to see the commitment. So thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on, let's move on to new business. Uh, code enforcement board appointees, I see both of our gentlemen are here. We're going to each give you a few minutes to address us and Morty, we're going to start with you. Your name is first on this list, so come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Morty Mills, seventy-five thirty-one Pine Tree Lane. I just want to say thank you to everybody on this council for nominating me or, you know, uh, considering me for this position. As a family, we now have four properties in town. My second, uh, child was actually born this morning in town.
Oh, wow, congratulations.
In our, in our house.
Congrats.
Congrats.
So, uh.
You had a home, you had a home birth? Yeah, nice.
Yeah.
Very nice. I'm too nervous for that.
I mean, the only way to go is my position. I, I have no, uh, I have no comment for the other, but I mean, it's the only way to go if, if you ask me. So I just want to say thank you guys. Um, I'm, I'm very, uh, very pleased with this council. I mean, it's, uh, it's incredible to see a lot of diversity here. I own, um, seventy-seven hundred Pine Tree Lane for five years now. I just bought seventy-five thirty-one. We're developing that, I'm not redeveloping, but we're recon- doing reconstruction on that. Um, I keep my properties in really nice condition. I mean, you guys are welcome to, you know, drive by, whatever the case may be. So if you want to see what my outlook is on the code.
Speak more into the microphone.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, uh, if you want to, uh, see what I represent in my property and what I consider, um, the ethic of the town or the way people should live, we, by all means, drive by one of my properties. My family now owns four properties in town.
All right, Morty, lean in a little bit so that.
I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker. I'm a yacht broker. So, um, anyway, um, between me and my family, uh, my in-laws, my brother-in-law and myself, we own four properties in this town. So if you want to drive by any one of those properties, by all means, that is a great representation of what this town deserves. Um, I've been living here since twenty twenty. I've been cited for things, sure. I mean, who hasn't? But it's not about what you're cited for, it's about what you're, you know, you're, you're, how, how you represent yourself. Excuse me for my tardiness, like I, I was up really early this morning, so.
Had a busy day.
A little busy. So, um, I, I really don't have much to say. I mean, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm, I'm building my family here, I'm building my, my home here. Um, I'm not, I'm not here for, uh, was, was it Jimmy Buffett's, uh, line there? I'm not here for a short time, here for a long time.
Long term.
What's that?
Long term.
Long term.
Yes.
But there was like a song.
Yeah, yeah.
You're doing great, you're doing great.
But, uh, anyway, like, uh, I mean, there, there, there are plenty of neighbors I would vouch for my, the way I, I do my things and, and, uh, I, I hope everybody can, uh, see through, um, those couple little citations. Any questions?
Any questions?
Have you ever served on a, one of the town boards before?
Not a town board, I'm actually a board member of a local charity.
I, I saw that fellow's angels, right?
Yes.
Yes, I know they work very well.
Very good.
Great, great mission.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, let me ask you, why did you want to serve on this board?
I saw a vacancy and I'm, I'm really proud of this town and I'm proud of what we can be and what we strive to be. I mean, we've all just spent an hour talking about light fixtures and garbage. I will say that WM or Waste Management is phenomenal and, um, little tip to every, um, resident in this town, do yourself a favor, put out some water for your garbage guys. You'll see that they'll actually make more of an effort.
Gatorade. I throw Gatorade out there.
Pour waters Tuesdays and Fridays. Pour waters Tuesdays and Fridays, they take your garbage cans in and out. Don't tell me I told you that.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Sir, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, you're next.
You want me to give me your address, my address too or not?
No, I don't think you need in this case.
Okay, uh, do you all have a copy of the resume?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure because pretty much it speaks for itself. Have been a resident since two thousand and four and welcome to the neighborhood and your whole family. I mean, Robert forever. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And so highlight a couple of issues that are noticed in the resume. I have over twenty years of experience in architectural review and code enforcement. I did this in my town in Herndon, Virginia, just outside of DC for many, many years before I came here. I have over ten years of experience on the code enforcement board here. Several of those, I was vice chair. I have fifty years of experience as a contractor and I have been a contractor, electrical licensed, electrical contractor in Florida since two thousand and five, which I think works very well with someone working on the code enforcement board. I also have a law degree and I passed the bar in Virginia and DC, so there's some legal issues do, that do come up in the code enforcement board. And it's been mentioned before that we need lawyers on the board, so I am, even though I'm not licensed in Florida right now. Had a very good working relationship with Dana when she was our code enforcement officer. We have a new one now and I don't think I'd have any problems working with him and I've had a couple of discussions with him. Have an excellent relationship with Paul, the chairman. Okay, known him for many, many years and we've worked very, very well together. And have very good relationship with Charlie, our town attorney, who's worked with our code enforcement board for many, many years. I know the codes. I was on the code enforcement board when we started to upgrade the codes because our codes had gotten kind of antiquated and didn't read very, very well. So I know most of the codes. I've studied these codes, I researched them, I've looked up court cases. One of the best things that ever happened to me was sitting next to Charlie for many, many years and we discussed a lot of these issues. And so I know a lot of the cases that will be coming before us. And it's the same issues all the time. It really is. And they're pretty basic issues. Taking care of the yard, roofs, driveways, making sure that houses are in good repair. And some building issues, again, I mentioned my experience as a contractor and that just falls into that. So that's pretty much it. I, I, like I said, I've got a lot of experience, like I said, over twenty years doing it and would like to go back and do it. I was on the code enforcement board up until two thousand and twenty-one. And so I've seen various vacancies occur since then and finally threw my hat back in the ring and everything else. And I, like I said, I enjoy working with Paul as a chairman and I enjoy working with Charlie as the council to it and I've worked with these codes for a long, 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 long time. So, okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Tim, you've always been a great advocate for the town and for its residents. Why, at this point, why do you, why do you want to throw your head, your hat back in the ring? For code enforcement, because you've seen, as you said, a lot of vacancies come and go on that board and, and so why now, what's, what's kind of driving you now to get back in?
There was no drive. I've always offered to be there for any vacancy that was there before. It's just the previous board chose not to renew me for that position and there you go. I, I've been available for the last four years to fill any of those positions and I always have stated as such. I didn't like leaving it. Okay, I was very happy to be on it. I was very happy to be vice chair with Paul as chairman and we worked very, very well together.
Okay.
So there, there was no overt decision on my part, that, that was not my decision.
And was it the, the, the board's decision or who, who decided?
Town council.
Oh, council.
Town manager's decision.
Okay.
Okay, and that was back in, uh, June of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
That's it?
Anybody else?
Okay, you have this little piece of paper on here? You want to put your response on it and sign it and send it down? We'll hand it over to Joe. Yes, but. Yes. Well, yeah, yes.
But you know my name.
You want to put your name in the hat too?
No, but you need to give us your name and address again.
You're joking.
No, I'm not. This is a matter of, this is a matter of public record.
Claudine Vassar, six nine oh four Venetian Way. I have a little word to say about the bridge. I hear a lot of people complaining about the bridge, that it doesn't go fast enough and honestly, I'm leaving, I mean, from the kitchen, I can see the guys what they are eating at twelve, nearly. Those, I mean, they work every day. If they didn't work two days since they start or three days, that will be a lot. I even saw him working till past six o'clock. What for such kind of works is quite late. They start in the morning, early and they worked all day. They just take a pause when they, they finish, you know, a, a, a big drilling that took a lot of time. Then they take, I mean, a little pause altogether and then they start again. I mean, Jesus, it's warm here. But they work every single day. So I don't know who, who says things like that, but as I say, I'm sitting on the front chair. Every day I can watch them. I have the bad things of it, but don't say that they don't work.
It's a frustrating process, but I've been saying all along, I'm predicting, no, not you, those others that you are referring to.
Well.
And I'm predicting that will be done early.
To be.
How early? That'll put me on the spot. But a good politician, no, no.
You know, I mean, it is what it is.
Yes.
Okay, you cannot make something without breaking eggs, you know, I mean, from, it's not the worst thing and I live nearly on the, on the farthest part because we have in Venetian, we have to take all the way. I think it takes me nearly twenty minutes to come here.
Okay, thank you.
So it's something I want to say. It's a company that works really well so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have results, please?
Yeah, I do have the ballots here and Mr. Morty Mills has been selected.
Okay, Morty, congratulations. Tim, thank you for your application.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you again. Greg, I, I shared an email with you or text message with you with a potential buyer of my previous property.
Yep.
Or property alone. If you would share that with the council because.
I have that planned for my comments.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now to our next agenda item. Joe, we're gonna start this off with you and see where it goes. This is discussion regarding parking vehicles on the grass. And there's a little bit of background in there under the new business.
Yes.
I know you brought this up, uh, Christie.
Yes.
Last time, so, all right, Joe, go ahead.
Sure. Obviously, if we do this, it'll, it will change the code, so it'll take a couple of readings, so, and obviously there's no rush, so let's, let's do it right. But we, we did take a survey of the town and at some points, there was a couple violations and then at some points, there was not any violation. So there is periodically some violations of this issue, which is parking on grass, that is, instead of parking in your driveway. Some, we tried to survey other municipalities. I think Mary just started that and I think we got six back or something like that and it, it was fifty fifty. Half the towns have it, half the towns don't. So it's, it's basically, I want to hear from you all. Do you all think this is something worthy? Obviously, right now, what we do is if somebody has dead grass because the car's parked underneath it, we cite them for that or if they have ruts when, during, especially during rainy season, if they park in the grass, it'll create ruts. So we, we cite them for that. So.
Miss, Mr.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. A resident shared this piece of information with me and I think it would be helpful for context. She pulled code from the Village of Palm Springs, parking code thirty-four dash nine one four E. Each vehicle, boat and trailer, recreational vehicle, hobby vehicle, race vehicle must be parked on a impervious or semi-pervious surface. And since we don't have any kind of code that, other than the ruts in the grass, I think that the Village of Palm Springs, our neighbor, does have such a code as it relates to the type of surface. And I think this came up, if I'm not if I remember correctly, during the trailer discussion.
I agree.
It did.
And I know that was a very contentious discussion, but as it stands here, there is code that we can model our current code from if we were to go in this direction and, and our neighbor, Village of Palm Springs says, hey, we need you to make sure that whatever surface you're parking on needs to be improved at some capacity. But I think it's important to note in this code as well that, you know, if you have a big party and everybody's parking on your grass for the night, for the party, like I think, you know, we gotta give, we gotta show some kind of respect to that. You know, they live there, they, you don't want them taking the entire road and then you can't drive by and then people complain about that. So like we have to make it so people can still use their property and it's reasonable. But I think it's also reasonable to have some kind of code that says, to your point, Christie, that parking on the grass is probably long-term, not the best look in our town.
I, I thought that we covered that under that trailer ordinance also, that if it was gonna be parked somewhere on there, that there had to be some form of padding or something or roadway, like two, you've seen them. I, I read the report and I saw it and, um, the, the difference between code enforcement riding around in the day and then the people riding around at night is a lot of times the ones that are doing that are gone. I don't think it's a huge problem, but I do agree it's something worth addressing so that there's, in the event that it's needed, there's some, some verbiage in there that we can rely upon. What are you thinking down there?
Well, you know what I think, I, I.
I know, I know. I want to hear, I want you to tell them.
I, I think it should be, parking should be on an, an improved surface or whatever the, is pervious or semi-pervious surface because it's in keeping with the vibe that, the, of, 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 of the town of Lake Clark Shores.
Now Dana, there is code that the vessels, vehicles and trailers and things of that nature have to be currently registered, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that, does that go for vessels in the water as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
And cars.
So that's another piece of language that should be thought about in there. Making sure that a lot of these, you know,
It's already in there.
vessels, cars, trucks, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's already in there, Mayor. They have cars, yeah, that's already in there.
All right. Well, I'm just here to say that there's some of that, that's not happening over here. So we've got our new guy over here, he's gonna work on it.
Are we referring specifically to cars or to everything?
I think everything.
Well, you, you're not supposed to park a boat unless it's for a short period of time, so a trailer. So it would be everything.
However, the boats can be parked on the side of the house without that, but they're parking them there without the, you know, the concrete pad or any of that kind of stuff. Which is a whole nother story.
I have mixed feelings. One, I think it, it, you should have something we can address. However, we are limited on our width of our roadways, so we're kind of, for those who have limited property, you're restricting their ability to park, so I don't.
Well, there was, uh, in the past, a council member that wanted to have a limit on the amount of vehicles that were allowed to park in the driveway. And I said, well, now hold on. I have six children and a wife. We have eight vehicles in our driveway at one time. So, you know, that's also food for thought because luckily we had the driveway to do it. And then the boys would hardly come home anyway, so it always wasn't.
You know, there, I agree with you most of the time, but if there's an intermittent where you have a car parked there overnight because you have a guest or something, that's something we're gonna really enforce or is that just for more of full-time use to be in parking on the grass?
I can, I can give you an example, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, Gardens has, temporary parking is permitted for social events up to eight hours and during, so that, so for eight hours, we're not gonna.
Yeah, I would say if you've got somebody that's overnight, that's an exception.
That's pretty standard.
However.
If it's repetitive.
We all can see when we drive around and see the ones that are, you know, that are doing it. And there's several, if you drive by, you can see the tire marks in the grass that lead to where they park. And there's one particular one in an entryway, which should be of concern, that it took a while for the trailer to get behind the fence. Now it's behind the fence, but the truck parked right there and is right on the grass and it's just like that, where an easy fix to make that look nice with a few concrete papers and boom, you're in business. Because I agree, and there's part of my comments that he talked about, I'll tell you what some of the, I don't agree with it, but there are people out there that have these feelings that we're going backwards, not forwards with some of our aesthetics. It's not me, but, so that, you know, that's also something to consider. So now that we have that, where do we go if we want to put this into, this would be a, a code or this would be an ordinance?
This would be in the code and it's an ordinance. The next step would be just to get a consensus from you to go forward. It doesn't mean you're gonna vote for it.
Right.
It's just go forward. So I would get with Bill or Charlie and we would get a, a proposed code or an ordinance together. And you guys would discuss that and edit as, as you wish.
I would say from, from me, I would like to see that move forward with language similar to what is.
Is that a motion?
You don't need a.
You don't need one.
You don't need one?
Just, just a consensus, just a consensus.
Oh, consensus, okay.
Just to go forward with our town attorneys to see.
And I agree with her consensus.
I consent to the consensus.
Good.
That's all I need, three. We're good.
Got our three. All right, very good. Okay, let's move on. Because our friends from the architect are from Jupiter. Yes, ma'am. Yes, come right up.
Anne Warren, seventy-five twenty-four Edgewater Circle. Talking about vehicles parking on the grass. I don't know if you ever go drive across Gregory Road, but people park on the grass on the bank side of Gregory Road, on the south side of Gregory Road. And I'm tired of seeing vehicles using it as a parking lot.
Okay.
Somebody needs to address it.
We'll bring that to their attention. Thank you, Anne. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for that perspective.
Okay, um, let's move on to item C in new business. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I think we got.
Oh, buddy, come right up. Sorry. I let every, I let everybody talk.
Claudine Vassar, six nine oh four Venetian Way. What about, uh, antique rustic, rusty vehicle on your driveway?
If it's registered, it's registered. That's, that's.
Even if it's rusty and a piece of trash.
If it's registered, there's not much that can be done.
Yeah, it's just, as I was a licensed.
Should, should that not be on the side? Should, should then, should you not ask the people to put a fence around? I mean, I think you know who we're talking about.
It doesn't have.
I mean, a fence.
You know, put a fence.
Fences make great neighbors, but if that vehicle has. Many great neighbors, but if that vehicle has a tag and there's not a, there's not a lot that we can do with them on their own property with vehicles parked in their driveway.
Another question in that regard. How long do you have, how long may you leave your Christmas light on your home here? Because I take them off every, every time and I put them up every time and I'm kind of tired of it. Doing that. So.
Haven't till the 31st.
How long may I leave them on?
It's 60 days.
60 days?
60 days?
60 days.
So how come that some people can leave them on, on, on the walls and then.
Well.
Gutters and stuff.
We've had this discussion as well before. Is it white lighting? White lighting may not be considered Christmas lights.
Ah, well, I don't know because they're not lighted anymore, but you see the netting and stuff like that. So it's kind of trashy. Now, we try to do the best with Venetian Way to bring Venetian Way up. I think it improved a lot. The gardens are looking nice. Green, maintained. Why do we have to look at a grass who is no grass anymore? Where they drive over on any direction to the backyard, the park connect in the evening talking. The evening you have to go if you want to see a lot of cars there. The day it's quieter. But how come that they don't have to maintain at least the area on the front street? Like everybody does.
There, there, there is language regarding that as well. Now, not.
I mean, I'm doing my garden every week.
I'm having a senior moment over here.
Dana.
Dana, yes. I'm looking at her. I'm like, don't ignore me. Don't be on your phone. There is for cutting and things of that nature, but not necessarily with the watering. Cause I understand what you're saying, but if it turns to dirt.
Because, yeah.
Turf down, correct?
It is, it is dirt.
Loose dirt.
Well, it's loose dirt. If you see on the right side of the property, it's all there. You cannot see a grass, piece of grass because the cars keep driving over there to do some work in the backyard on the jet skis.
Yeah, yeah, it's already been cited.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I have another little question. Since the, the bridge, since people cannot go very easily to the park anymore. I find, I mean, I own myself a dog. I love animals really a lot. Though I find that it's becoming really nasty and people don't take care of their animals. They don't take the poop up. And it becomes so that when I go to walk my dog, I have to see where my dog walks now. Or he go with his paw in poop from another one and bring it home. I would like that people would be a bit more respectful for other people. I mean, I mow my grass. If I don't see the, from somebody else, well, good luck. I can smell that nice smell as long that I mow my grass. That's not very fair. I pick it up. I pick my, the poo of my dog, I pick it up. I'm a responsible owner and I would like that that would be addressed a bit more to the town. Because it's, it starts to be phenomenal. And then I think on the poor gardeners. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I would, just a short comment. I, I went since the bridge and there's no place for people to dispose it. People have been less responsible and I think I tried to push for getting doggy bags at least some places. I know we explored some and some were on private property. But I think that would have been a short-term solution. Would that have eliminated? No, but I think it would have helped in reducing the number. Now back to the cars. Is there something that we checked to see if the car has a tag? Cause I, I, when I went by, I don't really look at the tag. It's an older car. It doesn't, it could, it could have, it could be registered and it couldn't be registered. So I don't know. That's a start to see if anything can be, it does have a tag? Well, then that's.
I don't know.
Okay, let's move on to item C, the approval of inter-local agreement to encourage and promote private investment development, redevelopment and related initiatives in central Palm Beach County. Joe?
I'll be sure on this one. I've talked to you all about it. Palm Beach County, central Palm Beach County is open for business. We're starting to, to look for quality development and quality redevelopment. We're talking to other cities. We're talking to the Business Development Board. We're talking to the Chamber. So we started this in North County. We're looking at, you know, there's a lot of exciting things happening. A big hospital announced that they're, they're building a major expansion in our area. So we'd like to see that quality growth come to our area, not only go to the south and to the north of the county. Palm Beach County is one of the most desirable places in the whole nation. So this is just an inter-local agreement, just promoting ourselves as we'd like to see quality development here. So looking for support of us working together with our neighboring cities.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement to encourage and promote private investment development, redevelopment and related initiatives in central Palm Beach County.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five zero. Okay, we'll move on to item D. So this year again, Palm Beach County's five-year road program annual update.
Yes, every year the, the county reaches out to us, their traffic division and road division. And they, they give us their five-year look in the future and they say what road projects they're going to look at and probably fund. And we noticed this year that they took off our Florida Mango project that's from Meadow down to 10th. And we don't know why, so we'd like to ask them to put that back in. And after I've had discussions with the, the town, I'm sorry, the county engineer, I talked to him about, remember that discussion we had about mobility fee versus impact fee and can we start our own? That's in my status report, but I might as well just tell you. It's not economically feasible for us to have our own mobility fee now. So I talked to the county about that. And he says, definitely put that in, in the letter to me saying that you'd liked us to, like the county to look into not having just only an impact fee, but having a mobility fee to help us with sidewalks and bike lanes and all kinds of pedestrian-friendly ways to commute. So those are the two things that are in the proposed letter for the mayor to sign. So I'm looking for approval to sign, send that over to the county.
A motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter to Palm Beach County with town's recommendations.
Okay, for discussion quickly, please. So Joe, tell me what did they tell you when you asked them what happened to our appropriation for the second phase of that plan? And is that plan from Forest Hill to Summit still in the mix too? I, I saw it, but I couldn't make heads or tails of that appropriation that they were putting in there.
The, the forest hill north, north of Meadow there or forest hill right near forest hill north. There's a lot of takings there to complete that. So there's a lot more expense.
Right.
So we, we can add that in the memo, but we didn't see, there's more, just let's finish what we got right now. It's this out.
Well, what did, what did they, so we haven't sent the letter yet? They're not aware of that?
Put it in the.
Cause I know we.
No, I told, I, I told him, but, 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 right, but he, he didn't, he didn't say.
Well, yeah, he's, yeah.
He was politically correct.
Yeah.
But he's, he's a good friend. We, we work great with the county. So we, we'd like to send him that letter.
Okay, all in favor of the motion that has been seconded?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carrie's five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, status reports. Chief Smith, we're going to start with you.
All of you have a copy of my report. It's attached. I'll, if you like, I can give you some, a few stats. We responded to just under 100 calls this past month. Our average response time is three minutes, emergencies, approximately 10 minutes and non-emergencies. Sampling of the calls, hit and run, child abuse, domestic violence, sexual battery, burglary and vandalism. We assisted Palm Springs seven times. We're assisting the Secret Service on equipment. That's going to be installed in the area for national security. Traffic is important. We stepped up traffic enforcement on Pine Tree in Westlake. We did a total of 214 traffic stops. We handled 13 crash reports, criminal citations, 27, non-moving 26, and we wrote 109 warnings. The LPR camera system that's located throughout the town. We processed 92,000 tags and they were processed and checked through the system with no violations. Four people were booked in the county jail, roughly DUI, domestic violence, warrant out of county and a DUI. And then you have the code enforcement and then you have the other information on the back. And I did an end of the year stats you can look at. If you have any questions, I have my staff here.
Any questions for the chief and his staff? Christie?
No, good thing.
No? Taylor?
Thank you.
Bridgette?
Nice, sir.
Thank you, chief.
All right. Thank you. Your staff was here and we got nothing. That's a good sign. Yes, thank you. All right, Bill, you're next, sir.
You have Charlie's legal status report, so I have nothing to add other than if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions for the attorney?
How is some, if, if, if the the owner of Hayden Road is, is deceased, how is it's, how is the property still homesteaded? Has to go through probate first?
Yes, what, what happened is, and homestead can, the homestead exemption can pass to heirs. And what has happened is the estate has been opened. They have filed a petition to determine homestead with probate court. And an order has been entered by the probate court determining the property has retained its homestead status.
So that, so one of the heirs is claiming it as his primary residence.
It doesn't mean they're living there. Now, there, there's different kinds of homestead. This is homestead making it free from creditors, which the town has with, with the code lanes. And there, there was also a court judgment several years ago. But homestead property cannot be foreclosed on, cannot, it's, it's.
So what, what is our recourse at this point?
Go through the process?
Yeah, there's, there's still a dispute going on with the attorney that's representing the estate. They asked for a, what they would call a known or municipal lien search. And the response was there are code liens filed and they're objecting to that response. So it's, it's still in the works. There, there's an attorney, I think he's in Fort Lauderdale that has been working on it as far as the homestead issues. The other thing to be done, if the property is not being maintained, it can, can be cited again and proceed with new code enforcement matters.
But we could keep levying fines, but we can't, if they decide not to pay them, there's nothing we can do.
Probably not, no. Well, I should say, new, new fines would be collectible or enforceable. But the old ones, the ones that have been going on for years, probably not.
We're working with Charlie on this.
Weren't they, weren't, weren't one of the heirs supposed to come here when we proceeded with the foreclosure to, to appear? Didn't they receive notice in front of the council?
I don't know. I know they were going to come in and request a reduction, but I don't think that ever happened either.
It never happened.
Yeah. And that might shortly happen. And then I, I'd like to have the attorneys update you probably privately on that.
Yeah, okay.
And then this way we'll have one-on-one meetings. But that's not on the, not on the agenda today.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Nope. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, Joe, you're up.
All right, I'll try to be quick. The, the two next month, the, the regular meetings, the next, which will be the second Tuesday on April 8th and May 13th. Upcoming events, we have our senior club, good idea, John, about having fire department do a presentation. Thank you for that. Well, also next Friday night, we're having movie night right here under the pavilion. It's Wild Robot. I never heard of it, but it's, but yes, is it good?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's awesome.
Okay, good.
I love that.
Good. Got to, got to start talking about it. Got to promote it. Wild robot. All right, we got a lake cleanup on Saturday, April 26th. You guys know about the bridge. We did put the frequently asked questions on the website and on social media. We got some good feedback on that. Obviously now we're talking about with them about a possible delay or a claim of a delay or for materials and for time because they found some old debris that was left from the old contractor 70 years ago. I've disclosed that all to you and we're disclosing it on the website where they, they said they were going to make a claim, but they haven't made a claim yet. We're still working with the contractor. But they have moved the timeline up to the 310 days into August. So they moved it from the beginning of July to August. Does it mean they're going to be done in July or August? No, because they can still make up the time. And we're hoping that them working all those Saturdays and Sundays and all that overtime that they'll make up that time. So we're, we're still optimistic. All right, the upcoming meetings, we'd like to forecast a little bit more in the future. We, we can discuss this next meeting. The boss is here. Hello. We, we'd like to change the June meeting and we don't need a, a decision today, but we'd like to change the June 10th meeting to June 3rd. So just get with, get with staff, please, see what you think. We can discuss it next month also. We just also forecasting the September meetings, those are always a, a real struggle to actually get the dates because we can flick with the county or the school board. This is when we pass all the budgets throughout the whole state of Florida. So right now we're looking at, the first meeting would be Tuesday, the first Tuesday, which is September 2nd. So this one you should definitely put in your calendars. And the second, and we'll put it, not, make sure we put it in the council's calendars, please. And on the website, the second meeting in September, we need two in September to pass the budget will be a Monday, September 15th. So just giving you a big advance on that. We're going to go over the master park survey. All right, we, we talked about the, the residence packets and how do we get that information? I had an epiphany that night when I said, maybe we'll call Palm Springs. I said, let's call, so I, I called the, the property appraisers office. They said, of course we have that. So they trained us how to do it. They trained Emily to be, to be honest, and she's now can get that information. So we know who's actually have sold parcels in the town. So we, we, we can do that. We sent out 46 packets and we'll monitor that on a quarterly basis and we'll send out new ones. We're looking at sending out the shoreline a month early. I don't think it's a big deal, but just letting you know, a month early on both the April and October instead of February or March and September. I have to make an announcement. This is by Florida statute that we, we have new phone systems. We'd like to sell the old phone system. So we have to just by Florida statute, say, we're going to try to sell and surplus those phones on, on gov deals or whatever. We try to find a, a, a buyer to, to buy our old phone system. The, the utilities department and I are working on that GIS paving. It's very intensive, very, a lot of work. We're saving a lot of money and resources by doing it in-house. But we've already had two meetings on this and it's, we think it'll be ready in June. It's, it's getting on that path, but again, they're doing a lot of great work and I've had two meetings with them. Community Park is closed. I think it'll be open tomorrow. The poles are in, the, the, the light fixtures are backwater a couple of weeks now. So hopefully that'll, the whole project will be complete, but the poles are in. If anybody wants to see what they look like, they, they look real good. The mayor, Vice Mayor Maples, President Pro Tem Keating. We all went to Tallahassee last week. We got a picture in there of us being there. We thought we did a good job of promoting what, what we see to try to promote the health of our lake and to see if we can get any septic to sewer money. So vacuuming, obviously dredging the lake. So we thought we did a good job and at least we, legislators know who we are. Next month, we're going to go to an automated utilities program where you, it safeguards against fraud and protects identity theft. So when you call as a utility customer, you'll go to an automated system to pay if you want to pay by credit card. We're also working on automating our code enforcement software. We're, we're looking at having that all. We're, we're looking at having that all on real-time on the web or on some portal for everyone to see. We're, the feasibility plan, I kind of said that we did, we did, Emily and I did meet with a consultant, and it's, the figures we got was a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand to do a plan. So the, the break-even point would take us decades to get back those kind of mobility fees right now with the future growth that we're seeing. So we're, we're going to still work with the county and still monitor this, because some people have got grants on doing mobility fees instead of doing the impact fees. But again, it's hard for asking for a grant when you have such little growth right now. We want to thank, was in our consent agenda, but we want to thank all the sponsors for the barbecue. What a great success. Thanks for the nice comments, but it really went well, and we have some pictures in there. And that's it. That's our, if you've got any questions?
Any questions?
Staff, Joe.
I know it's late, but I do have one, Joe.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Hey, we were talking about communication, and we've been talking about it. I got a call late yesterday. Someone asked me, hey, John, when's Community Park going to be closed? And I, I kind of knew the dates, but I wanted to verify them. And I looked at the website to try to see that closure, and I could not find it anywhere. So I think things like that need to be.
Yeah, that should have been on the front.
Like, on the front page.
Yeah.
Park's going to be closed this date, that, that day. We'll be open here. Here's an update on what we're doing.
It, it was, it was sent on social media, but you're right. I don't think it was sent on, put on the website.
No, I looked for it last night very thoroughly, and I couldn't respond back. I said, hey, let me get back to you with that, and I didn't want to text you at ten o'clock at night. That didn't seem appropriate, so.
You can do that, and my apologies, that should have definitely been on the website.
Okay.
We'll, we'll fix that.
Okay, so just moving forward, I know we've been stressing communication to the residents, communication to the residents, so we can make sure that is, I don't know what the procedure is of the process, to make sure whenever something like that is happening in the town, that, that automatically gets a flag. It needs to be on the website. I think that needs to be part of whatever process we have to make sure that's the case moving forward.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, we'll go to council comments. Kristy, you're up.
Thank you. Again, I want to congratulate the, the Shalhubes and all the volunteers for a unbelievably fantastic barbecue. I am still craving that chicken that we added on this year. It was so good. But when I was there, I actually ran into Albert Pavon, and I sent emails to you all. He was willing to put you all on automated, on the MLS to automatically send you all closings that happened in Lake Clark Shore. So it sounds like you've figured out another way to do that.
Figured out, but he was so nice to say that also. Thank you.
I, I attended the, some of you all did, I attended the opening for Deborah Tendrich's office just down the corner, and, and Joelle Flores, County Commissioner. I had a chance to visit, spend a little time with Mac Bernard and Bobby Powell in the last couple of weeks. And, oh, and one more thing. I had asked Joe three weeks ago now if the bridge contractor would come to this meeting and speak directly to us. Did he turn down your invitation, I'm assuming?
He, he never said yes or no.
Okay, I, I, I don't think that reflects very well on them. I, I would, I think it would be, I don't think it's unreasonable for them to appear before us every month or every other month, just to, to keep us in the loop. And, or preferably Ferrara, but perhaps also the engineer that we're paying two-hundred thousand dollars to could come and give us periodic reports.
Well, I didn't ask him, like.
Oh, I know, but he, he said it's another, I think, in the interest of accountability and, and information, I think it would be good to have one or, one of them at every meeting. You know, they could alternate every other, other meeting or something.
That, that would be consensus of the county, because if I ask him, the council, because if I ask him, we would have to pay for it. He would, Baxter would.
Which one?
Baxter, not Ferrara, not the contractor. He wouldn't.
Wait, the guy we're paying two-hundred thousand dollars to would have to be paid extra to come and give us a ten-minute, five-minute report?
He's paid hourly.
Pardon me?
He's paid hourly. Yeah.
We're paying him a lot of money.
He's paid hourly. His contract.
And just on a, on a lighter note, we discussed this at the, at the boat ramp. I know chief is, has, and, and all the police departments have these challenge coins. It might be fun for us to have our own challenge coins that we could give out to those who are exceptional volunteers at the barbecue or help out the town or retire from code, code enforcement committee or, you know, just a small token of, of thanks. And that's all I know.
Thank you.
Taylor?
I also want to shout out to the Shalhubes, who really turned it out with their awesome barbecue and the amazing volunteers. It was hands down an incredible job that everyone did. Sponsors, volunteers, staff, everyone. It was just so good. I even hired the band to do our event for Historical Society, because I thought they were so great. So if you want to hear them, come out to Evening on Antigua. Anyways, kudos to everyone, and I'm looking forward to movie night next week.
Thank you.
Bridgette?
Ditto on the barbecue, outstanding job, and every year I've been here, it's, it's gotten, it's, it only gets better, so I don't know how much you can approve of that. Thanks to all the volunteers and the staff. I also noticed that, I've seen police presence on the water more recently. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's a very important matter that, the, the safety of our, you know, the safety of our residents walking and driving, but also in the water. As we all know, we are Lake Clark Shore, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Echo that sentiment. Thank you to the Shalhubes and the town. And I think changing the date was a big hit, too, that Saturday versus a Sunday. I think that was a big success as well. Got more people out, got everyone excited. You can let your hair down a little bit. You still have one more day to recover. So I thought that was great, and people showed up, and that was fun. One thing I do want to stress, I know we're talking about the bridge, but I want to start looking to the future, because I think the bridge is going to be done, and we're going to have some success as we're doing the park. And we got our team here, and they're doing their job, and they're doing a great job. But I, I think we got to start focus on stippling the roads and redoing Pine Tree and making sure that that is safe, and start having that conversation soon as this bridge is complete. I think that's the next big step for this town as it relates to our responsibility. And so I know Genevieve talked about safety and restippling. Is that the correct word? Restriping?
Restriping.
Restriping? Restriping the roads? Most people are like, what is he talking about?
I went over my head.
Guys, I'm there. It's nine o'clock at night. I've been going hard all day. But, so restriping the roads and making sure that we have a safe community for everyone, and so that's important. But again, thank you, chief. Thank you, your team. Thank you, staff. Thank you, folks, for being here. Appreciate every one of you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good. Well, Bob would be the first one to tell you, an old Lebanese saying, you can't clap with only one hand. That means it takes everybody to make that barbecue happen, a whole concerted effort on everybody's part. So I'm going to read this letter that I received from the mayor of Atlantis, who was invited as one of the dignitaries, that says, please, Greg. Dear Greg, please accept my thanks for your kind invitation to attend the Lake Clark Shore's annual barbecue last Saturday. It was a wonderful testament to the vibrancy of your community, including turnout, friendliness, and a delicious offering of culinary delights. My wife and I thoroughly enjoyed this great event and appreciate your hospitality. Congratulations, and thank you for your leadership of Lake Clark Shores and your commitment to advancing the interests of Central Palm Beach County. Kind regards, Alan Kalback. He's the mayor. That's one of the interlocal agreements that we just signed with them for this whole Central Palm Beach County revival. It has been left behind, and there, we'll see a lot of stuff moving forward in Central Palm Beach County. So the next thing that Mr. Morse was talking about was a text that was received regarding a property close to his house that he was selling that was sent to the, the real estate agent that basically lamented the real estate agent for wasting his time, the place across the street, you know, buh, 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 this and that. So that is the sentiment of some people. We all know there's going to be properties, as you know, Dana, within the town that are gonna, for whatever reason, they find themselves in the situation they're in. That's what's going to happen. So I don't agree with that sentiment, by the way. I, you know, I, I think that there are those places. We have some challenges. There's a lot of deferred maintenance around here, but as we move forward, we have a new code board member, and we can start addressing some of these things that are on there. So, that being said, I'm going to leave us with this one here tonight, and I'm quoting, "Rank is earned, not given. It's a recognition of experience, dedication, performance, leadership, and trust." And that's something we all offer to our residents up here. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, ladies, thank you so much. We're going to call to order the Town of Lake Clark Shore's Community Redevelopment Agency, March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Chairman Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Chairman John Maples.
Here.
Commissioner Bridgette Keating.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor Materio.
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kristy Mossbach.
Here.
Okay, do we have any audience comments? No audience comments? Anything written or emailed?
No.
Nope. Okay, we have approval of the agenda. Motion?
Motion. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of consent?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, unfinished business. Parks Master Plan Survey Update. Ladies, thank you for your patience. We greatly appreciate your trip all the way down here from Jupiter. You have the floor.
Are you able to pull up the presentation?
She's back there.
Okay.
Yeah, she's.
You may want to pull that mic down just a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Great to see you all again. That barbecue was awesome. The chicken was so good. Yes, had the opportunity to show up for that and execute the survey. That was an awesome experience. So thank you so much for the invite. For the record, McKenna West with Cotler and Haring. For the public, just to go over what we're handling today, Cotler and Haring was hired to do the Parks Master Plan for North Park, Pine Tree Park, and Memorial Park. As part of that scope of work, we were tasked with conducting a community survey. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing the raw results of that survey.
It's delayed just a few seconds.
Okay. I should probably.
You've got to point it back.
Go back again. Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's going to move forward again. And I'd like to have a conversation about those results. So specifically today, we need to develop an action plan moving forward based on the results and kind of determine what, what we want to do as the immediate next step ahead of the next CRA board meeting. And I wanted to include this just for anyone that would be in the audience or watching, so they can orient themselves. I know we're all familiar with the locations of the parks. So we had one-hundred-eighty-nine responses to the community survey, which is not terrible. But, but, but rather good, kind of around the area that we expected, five-point-three percent is what that is. More important than the turnout is the, the representation that we got as part of that, and I'll go over that in a, in a minute. So the completion rate was fifty-nine percent. There are many things that could have contributed to this. This is, this is pretty low. The way that we, you know, developed the survey, some of the question formats, the way that we did it in A-B format. So some, not all people, not all the people that took the survey experienced the same survey. So if you answered a question a certain way, you might have gotten a different subset of questions. So for the people that answered yes to everything, they had a much longer survey. So that can explain why we didn't have a higher completion rate. Typical time spent, six minutes and fifty-six seconds. We were estimating about five minutes, so I, I feel that's, that's fairly good, especially with, with the population that, that did turn out. Some insights. So broadly, we have major over-representation of those over, over fifty-five years old. Major under-representation for those under twenty-five. That's, that's kind of the summary. We also have an over, minor over-representation of ages forty-six to fifty-five. And moving forward, I'm going to go through all the results. If we wanted to possibly do another targeted event, we would want to target those age groups that we didn't get enough representation from this time around. Diving into the results themselves, I'm just going to kind of breeze through these. And I hope you all have a copy of the presentation.
Yes.
Great. Okay, overwhelmingly, most, most of the survey respondents were residents of Lake Clark Shores. We already went over the age groups, over-representation in fifty-five and above. How often do you visit the parks? So most of the respondents either visit weekly or monthly. How do you get to the parks? So you'll notice that not all of these add up to one-hundred percent, because a lot of the questions were multiple choice. So most people travel either by walking or arrive to the parks by their vehicle. The primary, the opinion about the primary role of the parks, the majority answered that, sorry, the font is very small here, and they want it to be active spaces with playgrounds, fitness stations, and a, a dog park is mentioned here in this, in this option. So this is one of those questions that would have prompted them. If they answered yes, they would have gotten a subset of questions. If they answered no, they would move directly to the next theme. So I wanted to kind of go over what the themes were. So this is the first set of them. Recreational elements, active and passive. Gathering spaces is one, which we'll get into. Waterfront activities, safety, accessibility. And these things, these kinds of results that I'm going to be going over are kind of going to be the most useful findings when you're actually making the decision to implement the plans that we're going to make. Okay. Okay, so which features are more, most important for the active recreational elements? We had kind of a mix of responses, but the, by a small majority, open green space was popular. So which park was best suited for these features? Most respondents voted for Pine Tree Park for active recreational elements. Okay, so would you like to see passive recreational elements included in our parks? Overwhelmingly, yes, at ninety-two percent. Again, high, high yes responses on these, so a lot of the people that were taking the survey had to take the entire thing. Whereas we were expecting, and we were expecting a little bit of a mix. Which features are most important of the passive recreational elements? Walking and jogging trails was the most popular, followed by shaded seating areas. Which park do you find to be the best suited for these features? Pine Tree Park, once again, for passive recreational elements. Would you like to see community gathering spaces included in our parks? Yes. Which feature, which features are most important? Most voted for picnic shelters and seating and event lawn or open space gathering areas. Which parks are best suited for these features? Memorial Park, followed closely by Pine Tree Park. Would you like to see waterfront activities included in our parks? Which, I had a couple of things that I want to talk about after this presentation, following up on some of the conversations that we had at the first board meeting we attended. We were able to look into some of the things that we talked about as a sidebar. Yes, waterfront features. Which features are most important? Majority. On scenic overlooks and seating areas and kayaking and paddle boarding. I think that's kind of what we expected. Which parks do you think are best suited? Not surprisingly, Pine Tree Park. Which safety or accessibility improvements would you support? So this is kind of a different style of question. Again, multiple choice. Lots are in favor of more walking and biking paths and more lighting for visibility. And which parks do you think are most in need of these improvements? Pine Tree Park, a majority, followed by Memorial Park. What style of landscape design do you prefer? A blend of both natural and structured spaces overwhelmingly was the popular vote. And then I wanted to mention this one. Which elements should be consistent across all parks? United lighting design is one of those that was heavily in favor and consistent signage and wayfinding. Would you support additional landscaping for aesthetics, noise buffering, and environmental benefits? Kind of another one of the things that we spoke about at the last meeting that I can also speak to in a sidebar. Yes. Would you support historical markers with QR codes to tell the story of Lake Clark Shores? Majority, yes. The existing memorial area at Memorial Park includes sunburst pavers, would you prefer to? Majority prefers to maintain it as it is. I was surprised by that one. Would you be interested in participating in a post-survey community design workshop to refine the Parks Master Plan? We were very surprised by this one. Most people that participated in the survey do not want to follow up and participate in a design charrette to follow. I'm not sure why. Okay, and just going to go over some key themes. So this is kind of a qualitative research method that I use for open-ended responses, just kind of detecting the frequency of words that are used. I'm not drawing any conclusions from the words that are highlighted here. I just wanted to kind of show you what was brought up. And one thing that was definitely surprising to me, because we didn't mention it in any of the questions, was the splash pad. Lots of people want to see a splash pad. Dog, children, kids, community, park, improve, and safety being key themes throughout the open-ended responses. I also provided all of those to you as well. I hope that you have a copy of those. Okay. Okay, so with that, just wanted to present the results to you without any analysis whatsoever. We don't have, you know, a set of recommendations right now. We want to understand what you think is the best next step forward. So I just wanted to show you this kind of graphic again, and this was in our last presentation. This is an example of a community charrette activity that we did at the city of Atlantis. And we do have a charrette as part of our scope in our contract with you. Would like to understand what your thoughts are about possibly doing one. I do want to note, it would be similar to the kind of activity that you're seeing here, but we did do site-specific concepts for Paul Kins Park and the other parks in Atlantis. Whereas this would be more of design ideas and landscape palettes and lighting, probably. Among other things, just kind of more broad. Okay, and with that, how would you like to proceed? Some options I have here for you. So one, move forward with a charrette. I know we got the feedback, we heard what the community has to say in the survey. A charrette is not wanted by those who responded by majority. However, I do want to note the underrepresentation. Definitely something to consider. We could also incorporate feedback into two conceptual design options to present to you at either a special workshop or the next meeting. Or we can go ahead full throttle and prepare image and inspiration boards and a first draft of the master plan itself, based on the survey results, to present to you at the next scheduled meeting. So it's totally up to you. And I'm accompanied by Nicole Plunkett, landscape architect, who can answer design questions much better than I can. And thank you so much.
What were you going to elaborate on with the water? Said you were going to.
Yes.
What are you thinking here?
Yeah, so we talked about last time quite a few things. Got all the feedback from you, and that's what informed the survey development. But there were a couple of things that we were like, okay, let's pump the brakes. We don't want to necessarily prompt this in the survey if we can't do it. So we looked into a couple of those things. I got some feedback from another partner at Cotler and Hearing who specializes in transportation. And so we talked about kind of the crosswalks and the potential for doing crosswalk improvement, rapid flashing beacons, changes to the crosswalk signalization techniques in collaboration with FDOT, which is possible. A little bit of an uphill battle if we're wanting FDOT to do the work themselves. His recommendation was that we do town-initiated, kind of permitted work with some of their private engineers that they have contracted to do those kinds of things. That was his recommendation for that. We talked about some of the landscape improvements in that area as well. The overarching recommendation was to, he thought that it looks great, the median area just south of Memorial Park, I believe it is. I'm sorry, just north of Memorial Park and Pine Tree Park. And he said that the only recommendation that we would have is to replace the shrubs that are in that median like-for-like, because you can do that without a permit. Otherwise. The conversation about the wall against the railroad that that kind of blocks the view or buffers the view from Pine Tree Park and a lot of the residences on the lake. That we would highly recommend doing a permitting process with the South Florida Water Management District and proposing to plant some sort of friendly vegetation to.
Which wall is that, please?
So, yeah.
It would be on the.
It would.
Side of 95 or if you're looking east.
I mean, on the other side of the C-51 canal?
Yes.
That's okay.
Yeah, so it's a leasehold by the rail operator owned by FDOT. Essentially, we came to the conclusion that it would be likely very difficult to get them to clean it up. So. So our best option and.
That's a nice way of saying.
Yes. Our best option would be to probably plant cypress trees along the visible area along that wall. And of course, the coordination can be done. It's just, it's a matter of having the leaseholder be willing and ready to do the work or allow someone else to come in and do the work.
That would be from Forest Hill in the C-51.
It would be up, you know, your determination. I'm not super familiar with the area, so. Did talk about that, let me see what else we talked about. I wanted to understand, I'm a land planner, by the way, I'm not a landscape architect. So I think in code, I wanted to understand if docks were going to be permitted at Pine Tree Park. What was that going to look like if we decided to put that in the survey and then residents ended up disappointed because they voted for it? And they weren't able to do it. The short answer is yes, we can do it. As far as feasibility and, you know, actual application of putting a dock there, that's probably more of a question for an engineer, most definitely. But by code, we can, so that's great. Yeah, and I think that was kind of all the things that I really wanted to follow up on. Aside from the other big thing was, and we're not there yet, is kind of reviewing some of the other ideas that you saw through the RFQ process that you wanted us to integrate into the plan.
So we're giving our feedback now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I personally would like the second option that you're suggesting. I would love to see two conceptual designs because you guys, we hired you as the experts. You're going to be able to digest all of this survey information and data and feedback. I think in the best way to give us the best option. It is very interesting that that feedback.
Yeah.
Especially about the splash pads. But yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you for sharing and great seeing you at the barbecue. Question for you and recommendation would be ideal, and I don't know, Joe, maybe you could be helpful with this, but a recommendation of how to reach the portion of the population that was underrepresented on the survey, especially if we're not going to do a charrette, making sure that those folks know that they had an opportunity for their voice to be heard, because inherently, we're going to all agree on something and someone's going to show up and say, I wanted something different, or I didn't see that, or I.
I didn't see.
I didn't see a survey, or whatever they're going to say. So they're trying to get a fund on that and make sure we're over-communicating, an opportunity for everyone's voice to be heard, especially if we're not going to do the charrette and everyone comes and points and pictures and the whole dance and the thing. Is there a way to potentially put something on a little mailer? And hey, do this survey now and add in maybe the boat dock and add in some of the stuff that we're talking about tonight to kind of further get more data for what would be a great park experience? If that makes sense, just add some of the things that we've missed on that first survey and try to hit some of that underrepresented population that's in this community. So I don't know if we can do a mailer, or if you guys do that, or even your recommendation to how to reach those folks, because they're here and they have an opinion. We'd like to get it out of them if we can.
Absolutely, so my recommendation would be based on how you would envision them being able to participate. Would that be a special workshop? Or just having them come out and show up at a council meeting or a CRA board meeting? You know, so looking at how they're able to participate, you said extending the survey, maybe that is an option.
Yeah, I think expecting folks to show up to the CRA meeting or a council meeting.
Yeah.
In numbers that we need to get some real data won't happen. I think we're going to have to reach them right where they're at.
Yeah.
And so, Joe, maybe you have a strategy for that, that we can implement that isn't too cost crazy, but we can really get their opinion here from this town.
And I wondered too, hi, Nicole Plunkett, Cotler and Hearing. I wondered too, it sounded like there's a handful of community events that are up and coming. If you think as a board that that might capture some of that demographic, if we were to incorporate something with extending the survey and providing them, but letting them know at those events that they're already going to.
And Joe, correct me on this, but I think the same people who come to those type of events or the same people who go to the barbecue events, it's typically the same folks that go to the events, is that safe to say? You know.
It's the age group though, right? Isn't that the missing, sorry to interrupt you, Vice Mayor. It's really what the data that was missing is that younger age group.
Under 25, all under 25.
So how do we get under 25-year-olds to respond to anything?
Spring break.
Social media?
Free beer. Can I say that in public comment?
I just think it's like you reach.
You can, but that's free beer.
Through social media, so if we're not doing it that way.
Yeah, I got.
Because there are, I mean, how many under 25-year-olds live here on their own?
I got two of them mooching off of me in my house, but.
So how would you reach them?
They're not, they're not, they're no.
So there's not two.
I could pay them and they wouldn't fill it out.
Wouldn't. Yes.
Joe, could we do maybe a text message?
Yeah, I obviously have. I obviously.
Text message would be great.
I obviously have some experience in this. And I'll work with Nicole, but after you do the survey, which they did, and they did a great job, and thanks for getting back to us on the wall and everything. But after they do that, once you have a conceptual design, that's a whole nother ballpark. So when you send that out in social media and you say, we want to hear from you, we want to A versus B, tell us what you like of one versus the other, you'll get some input, some value, they'll get some valuable input. So that's what we, we're going to hit social media website, we're actually going to put it, if the way, I'm obviously going to take their lead, but I would suggest is we put it in the lobby. We said, we want to hear from you, the big posters are right there. And we can have one of these kind of things too, these workshops, but it's mostly getting the message through social media, through our digital newsletter and all that. We're going to get some valuable comments of what they like and don't like.
I think that's so. What you just said about the visual, so we do a ton of community charrettes for the Historical Society, because our exhibits that we put into like the Historic Northwest Community, I don't represent that community. So we want to make sure that we bring in the community and get their feedback. And let me tell you, the surveys never resonate, but as soon as we have a mock-up of that exhibit, I mean, down to every color we have used on that exhibit, the font and typeface, I mean, then we get feedback, so.
We do.
That's a very.
That's been my experience, Sean. If that makes.
So with that being said, then are you going to maybe factor in like a boat ramp and just kind of put all of the a splash pad? I mean, I don't know what, because right now, there's no clarity as to, you know, what all should be entitled in this mock-up draft that could be essentially one thing today and completely changed tomorrow, once you get more feedback. I don't, and you're the expert, you tell me, I don't know if you have enough data to make that mock-up look a way that represents what it could potentially really realistically be in the future without getting everyone's hopes up and then come crashing down, no, we can't do that. No, actually, that was for Atlantis, no, that was actually not what we're going to see here in Lake Clark Shore. So, and really, I don't even care if anyone, the pictures are great, I'm a picture guy anyway. Give me the pictures and yeah, I'll point and tell you, hey, yes, the rock looks good, like, great. But I don't know how we're going to communicate that, you know, to the residents and make sure they're reaching them.
There was.
Okay, so maybe.
We're gonna.
Right, so a link on the website would be helpful, maybe even a text outline to everyone, hey, you know, or a link to a place that they can do that would be super helpful. We just, we have to get this information to the people, because in the very end, I'm going to get a call and somebody's not going to be happy. So we got to over-communicate. But if we over-communicate, then more people saying they saw it is what I'm trying to get to, than less people saying they didn't get a chance to see it. So how do we over-communicate this link? Is it on the website, it's one piece of it, is it a text message, is it a poster note?
So I would, I would highly recommend, no matter which direction we go, to get more public participation, whether it's extending the survey or doing a charrette. Instagram promotions are actually very effective, and you can do them to a targeted geographical area. So you can do that, and that meets, you know, pretty much all of the age groups that we are underrepresented in. That's very effective, but you have to double down, and I would say I would recommend doing some sort of incentive, especially that draws the younger people. So some kind of a gift card.
So throw it on the gram and offer free beers. Put it on the gram and offer free beers tomorrow. No, I can't sponsor that. I'm not on record saying any of these things. I'd like to redact that from the record.
Ladies, I have a question.
Yes.
You know, human nature, I did the same thing when I was filling this out. You just said yes to everything, you know. Do you want chocolate cake? Yes. Do you want Benel ice cream? Yes. Do you want blueberry pie? Sure. But when it comes down to saying, you got to choose one of the three, have you, does, do you have useful information from this as to?
Absolutely. Please. Yes, absolutely, from a design standpoint, what our next steps are is that we're going to be taking this information. And even though there's slight variations in some of these answers, it does provide enough information from us as your professionals here to help you, guide you along the process to give you two options in this next step. And what we do with these two options is we don't give you two best options ever. We give you two different options, so that way we can get clear feedback on each of these things within.
The elements.
Elements, location of elements, style of elements. And then that way, you're going to get your feedback from visualization of it to create one great master plan that you'll adopt. So it's very intentional with the image that you saw with the city of Atlantis. We, within there, were contracted to do three different options, and those three different options were very intentional for us to almost survey from a visual standpoint to get the feedback we needed to create one option for them at the final endpoint.
Did we at one point talk about a rowing club?
Yeah.
Where did that go? Because our waterways are perfect for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it could even be a revenue producer. If we leased it, you know, leased out a little shack for
I don't think it's a, I don't, it might be a revenue producer, but it's not a profit producer. It's gonna, you know, with the infrastructure and everything. Again, it's what the demand is, that's that's there.
I still think having you break down the data and providing those designs, just because I've been through this process a few times on the other side as a participant, would be the best way for us to encourage the rest of that feedback. I just think people respond to visuals, they're more moved to have a response. And we'd be, we've already worked from feedback. We're just giving them that next step and push. It's not us picking or deciding on anything. It's another way to engage the community.
Right, so let me clarify, if we were to move forward with a community event, we would have concepts prepared to do that.
You would have what prepared?
We would have design concepts prepared to do that.
Options, two concepts is what you're
We would, we would analyze the results and we would prepare something to show them to get the feedback that we need for a final result. The what we need to know is, are we presenting those concepts to you? And are you giving us the feedback or are we getting an additional layer of community feedback first?
I like Commissioner Materials' recommendation of having the designs, but we need town feedback. We need the community feedback to make those a little bit more. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I heard what you said.
Nicole said a follow up survey with the visuals.
With the visuals, instead of going back to the same questions and trying to get, you know, twenty two year olds to respond, put the visuals out there and ask the survey questions again, now that they're seeing what this would look like.
Let me ask a question, step stepping back, and it's it's as much for you all as it is for us. Are we, is our goal for these parks to be, because they're so public on Forest Hill? Are we, are we wanting to draw the public in? Or we wanting to hope, you know, exclude the public? Because I know in a lot of the comments, people, some people were
We don't want to draw them in, but we can exclude them.
Yeah, well, I mean, for example, for example, Pine Tree Park is 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 probably, you know, probably would draw less people in because it's hedged off. And then you've got the open Memorial Park, which if we put a splash pad, for example, in Memorial and in Memorial Park, it would be, it would be mobbed all the time by passersby.
Just so you know, ladies, I've been after one of those for over ten years. I've gotten nowhere, even with this one.
Like an attempt.
We have room right back here.
Anyways, I I think what was just stated is, you know, this is for our community residents, but we're not going to be excluding people if they came to use it. Obviously, it's gonna get out that it's here, but I don't think we should have like neon signs to it.
Well, anything, if if it's current, if we don't, if it stays in its current open state.
Right.
Anything, any elements that are put in there will will draw the public.
That, no, that was discussed in one of the past meetings that we had here with them, that there were options for landscaping that would make the spaces feel more private for the residents.
So just so we're clear, in the design that you guys preparing, is it, is it water focused? Like heavily water focused, this is a boating community. So, you know, not that the rowing is a income producing deal, but I think people want to see what options or more options for water usage in those parks than what we currently have today. So I think that would be a huge part of the design. And obviously, you're the expert and Taylor has way more experience at this than I do. So we're gonna lean on her expertise as well.
So I kind of agree with the incorporated two conceptual designs as also with the follow up survey. The other question was, were you gonna incorporate the dock space? Because you talked about, yes, it could be done. Is that something that's going to be included in the concept along with the wall and any possible vegetation? That I know even that's another hurdle along with the corridor. They change the plants without, in the center and the median without, I mean, there's limited what you could do without having to go through a further process. There was only one other question was, I know we talked about, it's not part of the CRA. It was, I think we opted it up for that extra piece of land. Is that being, is that gonna be included in your conceptual design? Answer all my questions.
For the extra piece of land, that's a great point, yeah, unfortunately. Sound like you sound like you wanted your cake, your ice cream, Christie, she wanted everything, yeah.
We all do, yes, 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 and we wanted a Pine Tree Park.
Yes, 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 and everything.
Thumbs up.
I'm not gonna take that personal.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, so just to summarize what I'm hearing so far, still open for more comments. But what I'm hearing so far is that rather than doing an in person community charrette, we will move forward with two conceptual, when I say conceptual, kind of big picture bubble diagrams relating spaces with images that the residents can relate to and provide responses on. So inspirational images of potential elements within these two designs. So for example, concept one might have an area along the water where we say, well, this area could either be a dock or this or that. So just providing a couple of different layers within those two concepts. But providing that as a digital format that can be shared through cellphone or on the website, social media. So that way we can capture the age groups that are not going to show up to an in person event like the barbecue. So capturing the age groups of the under twenty five and also I think it was forty five through fifty five, somewhere in the forties. So almost like younger parents, younger families that may not be able to come out. So they're gonna get it in a digital manner. And Joe, we can talk to you about how we maybe adjust the funds for that future charrette to be able to put more into this additional survey, which I think is gonna work out perfectly fine and actually save you money as well. But that's kind of my vision for this next step so far.
I understood that twenty, I know twenty five, social media is a big way to capture them. What about the forty five? You know, what the, what's their best avenue to capture?
I think it's, I think it's still the the digital age, the cell phones or, you know, I mean, if you got younger moms, dads that are on their their iPads, their phones, I mean, I think it's a, go ahead.
Sorry, especially because Meta is Facebook and Instagram now. You can run a promo through Facebook, which will capture the older crowd and then Instagram is the younger crowd, yeah.
I feel like you just kind of captured our entire conversation very eloquently, so.
I agree.
I feel like we have a good grasp. Yeah, nailed it.
There's one thing I just want to clarify, that wall is not in the CRA, just so everybody knows. So that would be anything
Not included in their plan.
I would love that would be, but it's not, so we'd have to use general fund funds for that.
Just like no different than that little parcel of land, not in the CRA. But it could be included in the conceptual design.
Yeah, she can give us ideas, but we just can't fund it.
Understood.
Yeah. But thank you for getting that information.
Okay, we're good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, great, well, we'll see you next time.
Okay, thank you, ladies, safe travels home.
In two months.
Yes.
Every two months is a meeting. Thank you so much. Sorry you had to wait so long.
Okay, let's move on to new business. We have approval of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four annual report.
Yep.
Everybody look through it.
Everybody okay with it?
It looks good.
Good. Just to need your approval and we'll put it on the website. That's just, that's required to have an annual report.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of the annual report.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item B, approved to spend an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars on the purchase and installation of two light poles on the Pine Tree Lane Bridge.
So moved.
Again, that's been
Yeah, this is the other half.
So that's okay.
So moved.
That's because we paid for two and CRA pays for two. Any, we had one second, all in favor? Carries, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Executive Director.
No comments.
No comments. He's had a long day too. All right, Commissioner comments, Christie?
Taylor?
All good, I think I've commented away.
All out on the girls?
Yeah, thanks for sticking out.
Thank you.
Good.
Cutler and Hearing did a great job.
Well, I gotta tell you all, one of the the things that I found amusing in here was that a majority of the responders were fifty five and over.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying I'm fifty five and over, but then when you got to the QR code section or your approval of it, that number was pretty high and I'm like, I can't even spell QR. How are all the fifty five and over people gonna know what to do with a QR code?
They nailed it.
They got it. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Let it be said and let it be written, thank you.
Thank you all.